Good evening. Welcome to the School Board Meeting for Alachua County Public Schools on January the 18th, 2022. Please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to invite Ms. Rollo to give us our presentation for music for this month.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Simon and District Administrators. I'd first like to start by recognizing our wonderful student artists and their teachers featured this month in our boardroom. On Boards One and Four, we have Oakview Middle School, art teacher Mia Paray. On Boards Two and Three, directly behind the board, Hidden Oak Elementary, Hannah Jackson and Jennifer Jones Lovett, art teachers. And then behind me, on Boards Five and Six, from Parker Elementary, students from Parker Elementary's art teacher Sarah Zadonic. And now for our performance this evening. Caring and Sharing Learning School is a public charter school that was founded here in Alachua County in 2000 by two of our great retired educators, Dr. Simon Johnson, a retired UF professor, and his wife, Mrs. Verna Johnson, a retired Alachua County Public Schools educator. Mr. Curtis Peterson now serves as the principal. Under his leadership, Caring and Sharing Learning School fosters learning through rigorous academic programming, through arts education, and other activities that link concepts to real life and life-changing experiences. Most of all, the school fosters a safe and caring environment that stresses high expectations for all students. This evening, students from Grades Four and Five will share two selections in honor of the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. The students are under the direction of Mrs. Angela Terrell, who serves as Fine Arts Director. I hope you enjoy their performance.
He was America's hero in 1950s and 60s. He worked for peaceful approaches to some of society's biggest problems.
In honor of Dr. King and to express how we feel, we will sing for you, a Negro spiritual entitled, "Ain't Gonna Let Nobody Turn Me Around." The solo is sung by one of our fifth graders, Leah Henderson.
Ain't gonna let nobody turn me around, turn me around, turn me around. Ain't gonna let nobody turn me around. I'm gonna keep on walking, keep on talking, marching into freedom land. Ain't gonna let nobody turn me around, turn me around, turn me around. Ain't gonna let nobody turn me around. I'm gonna keep on walking, keep on talking, marching into freedom land.
Sometimes I feel discouraged and feel no hope within. But then I count my blessings and happy thoughts begin.
Ain't gonna let nobody turn me around, turn me around, turn me around. Ain't gonna let nobody turn me around. I'm gonna keep on walking, keep on talking, marching into freedom land.
So you may be discouraged and feel no hope within. So just count your many blessings and let the happy thoughts begin.
Ain't gonna let nobody turn you around, turn you around, turn you around. Don't you let nobody turn you around. Just keep on walking, keep on talking, marching into freedom land. Just keep on walking, keep on talking, marching into freedom land.
Standing on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial, Dr. King shared his vision of a future which this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equally.
We want to keep Dr. King's dream alive and one day live in a world where no man is judged by the color of his skin.
But by the way, he believes others.
Thank you so much for letting us share with you today. Our final selection will be a song from the Civil Rights Movement, "We Shall Overcome." Two of the fifth graders, Zoe Hines and Leah Henderson, will accompany us with the violin. Please enjoy.
Thank you.
We'll walk hand in hand, we'll walk hand in hand, we'll walk hand in hand someday. Oh, deep in my heart, I do believe that we'll walk hand in hand someday.
Ms. Rollo, I had a couple of comments about Ms. Terrell and the performers. And I would also, before you leave, if you could mention what Alachua County Public School students have just finished in Tampa, because I think that would be interesting to the community.
Absolutely.
And I wanted to say, just a story on Ms. Terrell. And Ms. Terrell, most, everybody knows her, she's an absolute legend and a treasure. And about a month from now, I'm going to be very excited because we'll have opening baseball, opening night baseball for the Florida Gators. And about maybe 10 years ago, I'm going into my seat at the ballpark, and these two young men, yeah, I'm thinking late teens, early twenties, sit next, right in the seats next to me. And I'm normally the only people that are singing the National Anthem, or me and my wife. And these young guys just belted it out, sounded great, and it was so unusual to hear other people singing. And I said, wow, you guys are great. Where did you, where did you learn that? Where did you learn to sing this? And my elementary music teacher, Ms. Terrell. And so she has, she, her work, her good work, will live forever. And I, and I just wanted to say that was so cool for me to meet folks that you would think wouldn't be singing, and they were perfect. So anyway, with that being said, if you, if you could tell us about what happened in Tampa.
So before I get to that, Ms. Terrell actually had an impact on me as a college music education student. I did a practicum with her at Littlewood Elementary twice per week for a semester when I was a junior in college, learning how to be a music educator in our district. So Ms. Terrell has widespread influence. This past weekend, 29 of our Alachua County Public School students participated in their All-State Ensembles at the Florida Music Education Association Conference in Tampa, Florida. These 29 students went through a very rigorous audition process in order to be selected, with students from all over the state of Florida. And they performed concerts to round out the week on Saturday morning, afternoon, and evening, with students from all over the state of Florida. Again, the process is a very rigorous process. The students usually, for band and orchestra, prepare two excerpts. They have to sight read in front of a judge, and then they also have to play all of their major and minor scales. The singers have to go through two auditions. The first one is a musicianship test, followed by a sight singing exam. And then the second audition is their vocal quality audition, where they actually go in and sing their recorded, and then that audition is judged by a panel of judges throughout the state of Florida. So very rigorous process. We are honored to have had 29 students represent Alachua County Public Schools, and I know it was a very, very rewarding experience for them, getting to work with students from all over the state, as well as renowned clinicians and conductors from various parts of the country, so.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As a proud member of the 1969 High School All-State Orchestra, I don't think I would have made it this year. But very, very high standards, so that's very good. So thank you so much.
Very high standards, and I too was an All-State singer, 1990 and 91.
These young people.
Allstate Choir, so it's always a good time to be there. I've been going to that conference now since I was a high school student, and every year we take away a lot of really rewarding experiences and, you know, different concepts that we learn as music educators. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to invite Ms. Ward to give us our ACEA update.
I'm Carmen Ward. I'm the president of Alachua County Education Association, and thank you Chair Hyatt and Board Members. And I would like to say that we had a very active December. We had a grant that we wrote called the First Book Grant with the American Federation of Teachers and the Florida Education Association, and we brought books to Lake Forest. And that grant was for giving books to students, and we identified Lake Forest as a school that needed support and literacy. And so we came and delivered books the last week before the holidays. And we were amazed with how wonderful the classes were. The educators there are doing a remarkable job, and I don't believe in the grading system that is used to grade schools, and I do believe that Lake Forest is an awesome school. So I just wanted to report that out, that we, and we do have some leftover books at the union office for fourth grade teachers that want to come and give those books to their students. So I just wanted to announce that. I also had the pleasure of visiting the GETP program, and I know some of the board members have visited that. Maybe all of you need to, because it is an amazing program. And I was very impressed with our students, and this is the farm-to-school program that they're, they're doing agriculture, they are doing so many activities to run their own school, and it is an amazing program. And so I just wanted to highlight that, too. Mr. Baines there gave me a tour, and he is remarkable. And, and he may be coming to one of our updates in the future to, to share some details about that program. We are also very lucky to have made it through the first semester. So the first semester has ended, and congratulations to all the educators. It is an incredibly challenging year, and with our current surge, it has even made it more difficult. But we have amazing teachers and paraprofessionals and bus drivers and food service and custodians in our district. And teamwork has been, has been an important part of getting to the end of the first semester. And I want to say that there's been so much illness that it was really a challenge to get grades done by the end. And the district worked with us with the outpouring of teachers that were having a difficult time with their personal illness, with student illness. To get things done on time during a pandemic is challenging, and the district was very flexible. We also worked together for a COVID MOU. We are in the midst of bargaining, and we still don't have a salary agreement, and we still have to make a priority, safety and COVID conditions. And so we just, on January 12th, came to an agreement, and one of those agreements was an extension to a COVID incentive, COVID vaccine incentive of $100 to continue, and for our COVID leaves, for vaccination, for testing, for illness to be continued, and several other working conditions that I won't bore everyone with. But I do want to say that our employees are dedicated and deserving of the greatest respect, and they are very anxious for us to have a settlement for salary as well. And so that is what we are waiting on, is a return to the table with a salary proposal from the district. So that's my update. Thank you so much for listening, and we will see you next, next month.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the news from the union. Next, we have an adoption of tonight's agenda. I, before we, before I ask for a motion, the item number nine, the approval of the special school board meeting minutes for January 5th, is being moved from tonight's agenda, and we will push that to the next meeting. So with that in mind, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Move by Mrs. Russell, seconded by Ms. Sirdan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes 4-0. Okay. Do we have any board member or superintendent announcements? Ms. Russell.
Yes, I would like to congratulate Eastside High School Culinary Arts Program for opening up, they call it, it's a blended coffee shop, and they call it the Big Horn Cafe. And my husband and I stopped by there to congratulate them and to see what they were doing, and it's very impressive. And they gave us, they had a student come and make a drink for us, and I will tell you, it was very good, better than Starbucks. And so I just, I think that's a great achievement for them, and I just wanted to congratulate them. And Chef Bedford.
Thank you very much. Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some sad news to share. A longtime educator, Mrs. Carolyn Whitehead, passed this weekend, and I wanted the district to know that. Her last physician in our county was at Howard Bishop Middle School. She was the principal there. And so her service will be this Saturday at Mount Carmel Baptist Church at 1:00. And we send certainly our sympathy and condolences to her family.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. What I thought Ms. Dr. McNeely would have said was mentioned the courthouse renaming.
Oh, but.
Since she did.
Go, go right ahead.
I will indeed, go ahead and mention that. So we had the pleasure of joining with the Mickel family on Friday as the Alachua County Criminal Courthouse was renamed to the Stefan P. Mickel Courthouse. Sort of a historic event for a gentleman who did a lot of historic things in his, during his career. It was a wonderful ceremony. We had the pleasure of seeing the judiciary, who came and spoke very highly of Mr. Mickel. I'm from, not just locally, also in the state, as well as the federal bench and districts outside of Florida and South Georgia there. We were graced with the student, and I just, I didn't write her name down, but one of the two essay winners was.
Jacqueline Rand, Jacqueline Randall, maybe? No, no, Randolph, and.
Bianca, was it?
Bianca Delight.
Yeah.
Good night.
I, I have butchered her name. The one young lady who was with us on Friday, she is on the website, on the district website, a picture of her, as well as you, Dr. McNeely, reading her essay. And Jacqueline, the student from Hawthorne High School, was not able to join us, join the ceremony, was not able to be there. But I've asked Ms. Johnson if she would print or post her, her essay as well on the websites to, so that folks can see what she was. But I think illness prevented her from being with us on Friday. It was a beautiful ceremony, and it is posted online. If you weren't able to make it in person, that you can go back and see that ceremony. I also would like to congratulate and say job well done to Ms. Terrell and the Karen and Sharon Choir. They also performed along with the PK Young Jazz Ensemble during that ceremony, and they sang the Negro National Anthem, and they did a phenomenal job. They were in the back of where we were sitting, but they projected very loud and clearly, even, you know, the microphone system was good.
Every word.
But they, you could hear every single word, and they sang very strongly and represented the county very well. And Ms. Terrell is indeed a legend in her own right. I am always impressed at the way that she prepares the students to perform. I mean, it's just always such, with excellence every time they perform. But it was that, the renaming ceremony of the judicial complex over there was a very nice ceremony, and I urge everyone who did not attend in person to, to take the time out to watch it. I think you would truly be uplifted and to see all of the things that Judge Mickel did as a trailblazer in his career, his judicial career here in our, in our county and the state of Florida as well. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Hyatt. Mr. Attorney, Delaney is so good. Bella Goodnight was the recipient who actually was at the event and did an awesome job in reading her essay. And Jacqueline Roberts, Roberts was the last name, thank you, Attorney Delaney, for the, for those students. And I see Dr. Simon's hand.
Dr. Simon.
Thank you. I don't have a button, so I appreciate that. So I have a few announcements, and I appreciate Ms. Ward mentioning how COVID has impacted our schools. Just so everyone is aware, we're still in the process of updating the COVID dashboard, but at this moment, since January 1st, 272 of our staff have tested positive and reported it to us, and 1,521 students have tested positive as well. One of the things that we have experienced is when we have this many staff members who are positive, who need to be quarantined, and obviously. who are positive, who need to be quarantined and obviously many are feeling ill. Um, that has impacted our classrooms. It's our transportation, our custodial services and so forth. Um, we are asking for your patience as we are trying to navigate this. I know many families are frustrated with buses being delayed. And, um, we are working out what we can. In fact, we're trying to come up with an emergency solution, um, hopefully within the next couple of days, but it's going to take some negotiations. Um, if you are not getting notification about a bus being late, I would ask that you please contact or look in your Skyward account and make sure that your contact information is current. And if you still have issues, to email the Transportation Department because you should be receiving phone calls and emails about late buses. And again, we do apologize, but unfortunately, this has really taken its toll on our staff. Um, it's very complicated when all of our staff is sick at the exact same time. Um, in that process, one of the other limitations we've had is access to testing. I'm sure many people know this and I know many of us have also received notification that we can order tests for our own family through the federal government. But one of the things we've been running into is staff being able to have access to a COVID test in a timely manner. Because if they have symptoms, we don't want them coming to school. And so we need them to get tested before they can come back. We have modified where for the month of January, if you have a positive home test and you are a staff member, we will accept that for your COVID leave because we don't want you to come into this, um, work environment and perhaps spread the virus even more so. But in that process, we also felt the additional pinch of the COVID testing and the timeline. And so I do want to thank, um, our partners at UF Health. They have been exceptional with creating essentially a new pipeline. And so once again, um, the education field has taken on additional responsibilities. And I want to thank, and I'm probably going to miss people, but I want to thank Prescott Coles, Jackie Johnson, Tanya Nun, Tommy Scott, Jamar Akins, David Shellnut, Kelly Costemo, and any additional volunteers who essentially helped us organize a district staff COVID testing center where we are doing 24-hour PCR tests. This is something that has never been done before and they managed to pull this off in probably like 48 hours of getting from an idea to an actual implementation. I believe last week, we tested well over a hundred and we're looking at about a 40% positivity rate. I believe today we had 75. And so we will find out how that's going. So these are, these are the situations that we are dealing with. So I do understand that our, our days have been much more complicated right now with COVID. Um, our understanding through the Department of Health is that this should be kind of the week where the peak happens and hopefully we'll start to see things turn around. But again, we are trying to practice as much safety as possible. And then the last announcement is we usually have our board meetings on the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday of every month. But the board members have, um, their legislative meetings where they will go up to Tallahassee and they will talk to legislators about concerns that are for our district. And there are many concerns and so we really do want them to be in Tallahassee and talking to the decision makers of how these decisions impact our community. So we are postponing that meeting from, uh, February 1st and the board workshop on February 2nd. It will be the very next week. So February 8th will be the first meeting of February and the 9th will be the workshop. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Dr. Simon. I'm going to circle back to item, uh, agenda number five, uh, the approval of the regular school board meeting minutes for December 7th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Ms. Sirdan, seconded by Ms. Russell. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, oh, I'm sorry. Mo, any opposed? Motion passes four, zero. Uh, item number six, approval of regular school board workshop minutes, December 8th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move, Ms. Chair.
A second, please.
Second.
Uh, motion by Ms. Sirdan, seconded by Dr. McNeely. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes four, zero. Um, item seven, approval of, uh, special school board meeting minutes for December 8th, 2021. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
A motion by, uh, Dr. McNeely, seconded by Ms. Sirdan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes four, zero. And number eight, approval of regular school board workshop minutes, um, for January 5th, 2022. Uh, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Um, okay, we have a motion by Ms. Sirdan, seconded by Ms. Russell. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four, zero. Uh, thank you very much. Um, we're, we've come to the point in the, um, agenda for citizen input. 15 minutes have been set aside for general comments, general citizen input. Uh, action items, uh, will be addressed. You can be addressed during the, um, when those items have been moved and seconded. So, um, we're, we're going, and I did want to say that, um, uh, everyone will have three minutes to, uh, make their case. And, yes.
May I interrupt, Chair? Um, actually, we are scheduled for a public hearing.
Okay.
At 6:30. So if we could take a break from the regular agenda and move to that?
Okay, thank you very much. Time certain. And so this, uh, the regular school board meeting is adjourned, not adjourned, is in recess. And we're going to start with the, um, public hearing.
Thank you. We are here right now for 6:30 for a public hearing in order to consider the proposed repeal of Board Policy 8450.01, Protective Facial Coverings During Pandemic Epidemic Events. We had a first reading on this on December 7th, 2021. The proposed repeal of this policy is a result of the writ of mandamus entered in late 2021 and the revised Florida Statute, Section 1,002.203N. The repeal of this policy aligns with the requirements of the writ in Florida law. So I'd ask to turn it over to any, um, public input at this time.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Attorney. The first citizen, uh, to speak on this, uh, matter is Alana O'Brien.
Hello, um, thank you for the school board for accepting a public, uh, comment on this. Uh, my name is Alana O'Brien. I'm a PhD candidate in biomedical sciences at the University of Florida and I've been a resident at Gainesville for six years. Um, and I oppose the repeal of the mask policy. Um, this mask policy keeps student state, uh, keeps, um, students and staff and the whole community safer. Um, so I'm concerned with the health of the students, um, especially vulnerable students, students with disabilities who are more likely to have immunodeficiencies, chronic health concerns. They're the ones most affected by a repeal of the mask policy. I'm also vulnerable students socioeconomically. Um, if there's outbreaks at school, they're sick, their parents are sick, their parents may miss time from work and they, um, and this puts students in a more, um, economically insecure position. I'm also, the students should feel safe at school. Um, wearing masks at school will make the students feel safer and not worry about the spread of COVID and so they can focus better at school. Um, I also conserve the health of the teachers, just the general health of the teachers and staff. And as we heard before, teachers catching COVID at school, um, results in more sick days for teachers and more staffing shortages. Um, and also the school board should think of the negative impact of the decisions, not just on the school itself, but the whole community. Um, as I am a part of that community, uh, we want to reduce overwhelming, um, our hospital system. Um, I guess some personal experience, um, as a PhD candidate in biomedical sciences, I work in a research lab. And with the emergence of the Omicron variant, restrictions in our lab have gotten actually tighter, not looser. Um, we now have restrictions on, uh, lab member density and we are now being given N95 masks to wear at work. Um, and so, so far, no one in our lab has tested positive for COVID-19 since we've come back from the holiday break, even though Omicron is surging. So, um, even though it is just one, um, case study, um, that it seems to be preventing COVID's spread, at least in our workplace. Um, so in conclusion, I oppose the repeal of the mask policy in schools. Um, if those policies repeal, I expect the health of the students, the staff and the health of the community to suffer. And, um, I don't believe this mask policy would significantly interfere with the students' educational, or the district's educational or operational processes. Um, it's a piece of cloth on the face or an N95 or a respirator and this presents little to no burden to the wearers, except in very specific and rare circumstances outlined in the policy already. Um, and so I would like to, uh, thank you for hearing public comment.
Uh, thank you, Ms. O'Brien.
Superintendent, esteemed members of the board, as stated, my name is Dusty Bailey. I would like to, uh, state that I'm obviously in favor of the repeal of the mask mandate for the students. Um, not only that, but also a consideration that the mandatory masks for staff, transportation, um, and teachers be lifted as well. It was just mentioned that there was no perceived indicators that there was any issues with, uh, students' ability to learn because of the mask mandate. Uh, there are reports that in fact, that is inaccurate, that, uh, children, especially with, uh, speech deficiencies, are having a much harder time deciphering, uh, their, uh, not just their phonics, but their phonemic awareness. Um, and a lot of this is attributed to the fact that they cannot see the facial gestures or the way that, uh, mouths are used to pronounce those sounds. Um, again, I am a public educator. I am a parent of students in Alachua County schools. However, I will not stand up here and say that I represent, uh, either of those parties in a, as a whole because obviously we're all individuals and we have our, uh, different opinions, uh, which we are, um, we do have a right to our, our different opinions. However, uh, we do not have, uh, a right to askew the, the facts, um, the truth. As I maintain, the truth has no agenda. Again, I, I congratulate you for your efforts in repealing uh, the mask mandate for students. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Do we have any? Okay, we have a caller addressing this issue. You have three minutes with the board. Go ahead, you have three minutes with the board.
Mr. Jenner, citizen input. All right, for Jenner.
Uh, you could, you could check, though I don't have any more.
Sorry, Adriana Keen. I wasn't expecting to talk on this tonight. Um, I just wanted to remind the citizens of Alachua County that all the classrooms, I believe, have gotten the air purifiers. That I'm sure the superintendent can clarify, uh, how much it's refreshing the air and cleaning the air. COVID is a airborne virus. And I think it would bring some ease and comfort to some of the families if they were reminded of all the mitigation efforts that have been done to have the air quality cleaned. Um, for those who have still some concerns, just wanted to put that back out there, that all the classrooms in our district, correct, have these wonderful air filters that are cleaning the air. I think it was twice every hour, half an hour, something like that? I can't remember. I know there's an article somewhere. Um, so that would probably be the best way to mitigate the spread. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have any, anyone on the phone? Okay, but go ahead, Ms. Attorney.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just believe that that would conclude this public hearing and would ask that you conclude the hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Public hearing is concluded and we are now back in session for the regularly scheduled school board meeting. And we were just getting to, um, citizen input. And I've already explained that, so I will save a further explanation. And, uh, our first speaker is Karen McCann.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me through this N95?
It's a little muffled.
Can you hear me better now? Never mind.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, Chairman Hyatt and school board members for hearing me. I came back this evening before you start, uh, timing me for three minutes. I came back this evening because I spoke at the last board meeting and I had several comments and people contacting me that they weren't able to hear the second part of what I had to say. And so I came back to be able to have this for public input and for public hearing. I'd like to be able to, um, on tape, uh, be able to finish what I had to say. Um, the other reason that I came back today is because as soon as I sat down at the last board meeting, I started getting my phone blown up by teachers who were thanking me. And so I'll begin now. Um, thank you. From a current 29-year first year, from a current 29-year first grade teacher, capital letters, thank you. I'm screaming it from the rooftops. Please keep speaking for those of us who are forced to be silent. And so I'm going to go back and I'm going to pick up where I left off that wasn't, the public was not able to hear. At the beginning of what I spoke about, I talked about the failed policies of firing and non-renewing highly qualified people in the district at the beginning of Dr. Simon's, uh, tenure here and how that impacted people in our district. Not only administrators, but I'm hearing from teachers also. To begin, superintendent was fired on, uh, Karen Clark was fired on a Monday. Dr. Simon was not vetted by the community, nor does she meet the qualifications of her contract. She was immediately hired with no vetting. Since this time, this careless act has led to feelings of fear, insecurity and being devalued among many of our school and district level administrators who make comments such as, "I just put my head down and do what I'm told." The work environment is toxic and it leaves administrators with no, uh, uh, it leaves, it left, many administrators have left the district seeking jobs in other districts. A current request for records has shown that 13 people have left the Office of Exceptional Student Education since Dr. Simon has come on board. If you look at the personnel, you see teachers leaving constantly, constantly, not just because of COVID, but because discipline is horrific in the district. Instead of Dr. Simon building trust and caring relationships with her administrator and her employees, she's created an environment of fear and retaliation. Yes.
That's your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
And so if you'd like to come back at the end.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and I will say that I'm going to stop everybody at three minutes, regardless of where you are. And, um, our next speaker is Pamela Korthowski.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Thanks. Good evening, Chair Hyatt, school board members, and superintendent. My name is Pamela Korthosky, and I'm a parent of two children in the Alachua County Public Schools. I've been a volunteer in the school district for 10 years, and I'm partner in education with the school district. I understand that this has been a challenging couple of years, and I commend you for the difficult decisions that you've had to make and continue in making, to continue to educate our kids. I'm asking you today to please take the recommendation to perform a national superintendent search. Back in 2016, when you hired the last superintendent, you included the community and partners in education in your search. The minimum qualifications that you had outlined for this position included a master's degree or an earned doctorate, a minimum of 10 years of educational experience with at least three years in a senior-level leadership position, teaching and principal experience, leadership experience in a district of 15,000 or more, and Florida experience, so if they worked in Florida. I believe our current superintendent only meets one of these qualifications, and somehow, she was appointed the superintendent in something like two weeks. You are doing it to our children a disservice by carrying out her contract. As a parent, my job is to create stability for my kids during these really difficult times. And I feel that the superintendent has just created instability for our children by making unprecedented changes in our district during COVID of all times. I'm not saying change isn't good, but at this time, we don't need to lose talented educators and district administrators when there is already an employee shortage. I don't see any innovation or creativity coming out of the district right now with regards to transportation or safety and discipline. The current E S C department, as you've heard from Ms. McCann, has been overhauled, and not for the better. They have lost 13 people in the last six months, and this is affecting our E S C children. This is what I call instability. I also, when I contact the district, I don't get any answers. I call and I email, and people don't talk to me. Again, I'm asking you all to ask for the support of the F S B A and the Superintendent Association, and to conduct a national superintendent search, and at the same time, appoint an interim superintendent who understands our county, and who is qualified to run a district of 20,000 students. The children of Alachua County deserve that much. We are a county that values education, and we have proven that by voting for both the one mil and the half cent sales tax. There's been very little communication and transparency, in my opinion. This hasn't been a transformation, but more of a train wreck. Please do right by the children and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, we have two? Okay. How are we doing on time, Mr. Delany, for the 15 minutes?
I think we have time for one more.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Tina Days, and I'm calling in. And I don't know why all this is a lack of moral support, but superintendent has to support many parents, including me. I support her from the first beginning, and she has been transformational. I guess if she not get along person, then y'all don't like her. I also wanted to say that I remember a school board member said that she was worried about the COVID cases that coming back from Christmas. Well, I had, out of two years, my daughter had to be quarantined one time, but then three weeks. One daughter had to be quarantined twice because she came in contact with somebody positive. I had another daughter had to be, she came in contact with somebody positive. So, y'all talk about not wanting a mask. If my daughter didn't have masks, both of them had to be quarantined. I have a nine-month-old daughter here at the house. She's not vaccinated. We're vaccinated. So, these cases are on the rise, and y'all still talking about y'all don't need a mask. I don't know what y'all saying. So, that's one thing. And also, I want to, I sent all the board members an email concerning the workshop on the field. I was just appalled at the way the chair responded to a school board member. I heard that she had a legitimate question about potential several members being a violation of the sunshine law. She was not.
We're going to end this. Thank you. Okay, so we are done with this portion of citizen input. And what I'd like to do, I know this is, Commissioner, we are, is, what I'd like you to do is, after Dr. Simon makes your presentation, we'll give you a chance to make your comments, see if it's on that same area. Okay, so, Dr. Simon, if you would proceed. Thank you.
So, who's handling the camera? If you wouldn't mind throwing the slides up on the screen, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. So, I wanted to give an update of what we're doing with Duval, or what we're hoping that we can continue to do with Duval. We have presented this to the city commission, and so, there is a link in this presentation, and there is a note that will tell you the actual time to start the video presentation, so you can see how the city responded. But I wanted to give you some background. And then I have three co-presenters that I would like to also introduce. So, actually, we'll probably start with introductions, and then we'll kind of rotate through, so if you three don't mind coming up.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Deion Champion with the College of the Arts at the University of Florida.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Oshibi Craig. I'm the director of the Center for Arts Migration and Entrepreneurship at the University of Florida, and part of the Spark 352 Leadership Team.
Good evening, everyone. I am Desmond Duncan Walker, city commissioner, District One. I'd also like to add that along with me, I brought our city manager, interim city manager, Cynthia Curry. And also joining us this evening as a partner is Commissioner Mary Helena Wheeler from the county commission.
So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we got through all the introductions first. So, last year, what ended up happening is that, to catch the community up, in 2021, the board unanimously voted to pause on Duval Early Childhood Center. We moved the kindergartners and the pre-K students to what would be their feeder school. And that school was supposed to remain empty at that place to pretty much give us some time to determine what we needed to do next with it. What ended up happening, and really, in a very interesting and unfortunate way, one of our nonprofit after-school partners had a fire at their facility. And so, they approached me, and they asked if there would be a way to temporarily lease the Duval building. And in that process, they ended up joining with three other nonprofits. And so, right now, and you will have in this presentation, which is on our board docs, the four nonprofits are ACES in Motion, Project Youth Build, Greater Duval Neighborhood Association, and Kids Count Alachua County. And there are links to all of their websites. This ended up being a pretty interesting experiment in the aspect of what would it be if we had multiple nonprofits that serve a wide range of students under one roof. And so, what we found, just in this short period of time piloting this experience, was a synergy formed. First off, we have these nonprofits that are offering after-school care of our students. Because they serve different needs of students, we end up having a ability to serve students in grades one through 12. So, one roof, many of our programs share families. They have a way of being able to bring in and build their capacity. So, we have benefits associated with transportation. So, one family, if they have students in different programs, actually go to one location, so they're not driving all over town. We also have the ability for the nonprofits to collaborate. This is not only just helping them with just their own capacity, but it also is helping them get creative. They started sharing programs and trying to find ways where they could overlap and not be redundant. The other thing that we appreciate about this is that we were able to not only just serve the whole child, but these programs are now able to really serve the entire family. And this has created an opportunity that I think we can have grow some more. So, what ended up happening is some opportunities presented themselves. So, Commissioner Duncan Walker and I actually went to Duval together as kids. We were best friends. And Commissioner Duncan Walker represents that community. She actually is living in her grandmother's house that we used to play in after school across the street. So, we started talking about Duval, because we love Duval, and there's a lot of things that we're interested in trying to kind of bring back. And so, what we have noticed, and what I think I've noticed, especially collaborating with our nonprofits, is that the expectations now for education are, a traditional school day is just not enough. We need to make sure that we are serving the students even after school as well. And we can't, we don't have the capacity to do this as a K-12 education system. So, we do benefit from our partners. And I also do want to say, and I'm very sorry, Executive Director Colin Murphy from the Children's Trust, the Children's Trust was part of funding these nonprofits that we are collaborating with, as well as the City of Gainesville. So, we are kind of bringing in all sorts of funding resources, as well as our nonprofit partners. In the discussions, what we've had is that Commissioner Duncan Walker talked about the needs that they're having at the city. So, us in the school district, we noticed that we know we need to have mental health support. We know that we're interested in mental, sorry, after-school programming and positive youth development. If you go to a city commission meeting, you're going to hear that exact same discussion. If you go to a county meeting, you're going to hear that exact same discussion. If you go to a Children's Trust meeting, you're also going to hear that. So, we all have the same concerns. And what we were trying to find is where can we kind of build off the synergy that we have with these four nonprofits, and have it grow even more so. So, Commissioner Duncan Walker has presented this cultural arts center to the city, and there is city interest, and I believe there might even be more interest beyond that, of essentially creating a place where what was a education facility in like a K-12 setting, an elementary school, could actually become an education facility and a cultural arts facility for young, old, everyone. So, this could be a place where people could learn through arts, through music. We're interested in really exploring these ideas. I do have, and I'm going to rush through them, but this is essentially, what is her name? Kalen Escobar, she presented this to the commission. She works for the city commission, and she presented a presentation. You guys have the presentation where there are outlines of certain community centers that are across the country, that we like their cultural art approach. And so, you can see kind of what they are offering. But I did want to bring in Commissioner Duncan Walker to speak more to this, since it's kind of her brainchild.
Thank you so much, Dr. Simon. And thank you to all of the members of the board for allowing us to assemble here this evening to talk about something that is really near and dear to my heart. I'm looking up at Dr. Leonetta McNeely, because, Dr. McNeely, I remember when you brought the arts, or Center for the Arts, to Duval several years ago. And I remember how that impacted the grades. I remember how it impacted the morale in the community. I remember how the students loved it. I remember coming and being a part of one of your programs and judging one of the events that was there. I also remember the great sense of loss when it no longer existed. And so, what we know is that the arts are a very, very powerful tool to increase grade scores, to increase graduation rates. One of the sparks, if you will, for this idea has grown out of the increased violence that we've begun to see amongst our youth, not just in District One, but throughout the entire Gainesville community. I had several conversations with the chief of police, and in our conversations, he shared with me that state data shows that not only are the instances of violence affecting younger and younger students, but the trend is predicted to only get worse over time. And that is, if we don't become very, very intentional about our response. Data also shows that the arts has the power to reduce crime. We know that we have to impact crime, particularly gun violence, by addressing its root causes. And so, I called Dr. Simon, who yes, is my friend. We attended Duval Elementary School together, and so, that place is very, very important to us. Ms. Diana Davis, who is still in the school system, I believe, was our second-grade teacher. We both had music class under Mr. Harold Jackson. We danced in the Duval Dancers under Ms. Gloria Merricks. We can tell you about the profound impacts of those experiences underneath those individuals. But I personally have a background in the arts. I have a background in arts performance, production, as well as presentation. I had the opportunity to work at the African Heritage Cultural Arts Center in Miami-Dade County, which is in the heart of Liberty City, one of the most embattled communities in this country. And I often share this story, and I hope that you will give me just a few moments to share it with you this evening. I was standing out on the back of the African Heritage Cultural Arts Center with my dear friend and the director, Mr. Marshall Davis, as a group of five young African-American men came walking across the backfield. They did not belong to the center. They were not our students. But instead of becoming alarmed, we simply stood and waited for their approach. As they got up to us, the leader of the pack, who would later become known to us as Cornell, asked, "What is this?" I was excited that he asked. I said, "You want to know what this is? Let me show you." I took him on a tour of the band room, the museum, the art studio, the photography lab, the 250-seat black box theater that was right next door to the shop where students built the set pieces. He was overwhelmed. His friends were ecstatic. They wanted to know how they could become a part of the African Heritage Cultural Arts Center. Now, this was profound for me, not just because I believe that there is an artist in every child, but it was profound because these young men chose to come to the African Heritage Cultural Arts Center instead of walking about 20 feet further to the corner of 62nd and 20th, where they could have engaged in any type of illegal activity that they wanted to. They had a choice. The African Heritage Cultural Arts Center provides a much-needed alternative to the streets. We don't have a cultural arts center here in Gainesville, and we should. I have witnessed firsthand how the cultural arts center saves lives of not just students, but families, addresses root causes of violence like poverty, lack of access to education, et cetera. We need a cultural arts center here. And so, it simply made sense that I would reach out to my dear friend Carly and ask her, "What is going on with our beloved Duval?" I live right across the street, so every morning, I have the opportunity to see the school that my parents went to, where they met, the school that I went to, and the school that is an anchor in District One, the seat of so much potential. I'll close my comments this afternoon, because Dr. Simon has the remainder of our presentation here by saying, "I'm excited about the possibility of partnering with the Alachua County Public School System to bring the much-needed help and resources to our students and their families." to bring the much-needed help and resources to our students and their families." They've asked me for it. I've had the opportunity to talk with the students in the summer sling program. I've had the opportunity to talk with several students in the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, other organizations, individuals in churches and in the grocery store. And they've said one thing that kind of was common amongst so many people, and that was, "Commissioner Duncan Walker, we don't have anywhere to go. We don't have anything to do." I believe that a cultural arts center in the heart of District One, East Gainesville, will provide that something to do and that's someplace to go. The possibilities are endless for programming. We have tasked our city manager and staff with coming up with a plan for how we can program it, how we can add additional resources to what the city has stated that they will provide. But I look forward to speaking with you in the future months about how we can possibly congeal a partnership and work towards helping the students and the families of Alachua County with a cultural arts center. Thank you.
So as Ms. Walker has mentioned, we are um, we're in the process of hoping to be able to continue this discussion and really expand upon it. Um, we do have these example cultural arts center programs, and we do have some data associated with um, our juvenile arrest rates. And so we see this as an opportunity to really bring in our collaboration with law enforcement, our after-school programming, our acceleration and interest in the arts for our students. We also, as a district, we need this facility space for our McKenna Vento students, uh, our staff to work with our McKenna Vento students, as well as Title One. So we see this as a very interesting hub where we can have all sorts of resources for community members and our students. So we do also have, um, this is from the city presentation that you can see the positive return um, as far as investments in the youth activities. Um, this also increases student performance. We see this as an intersectionality that we can have with our cultural arts, positive youth development, social emotional health, education, out-of-school time, play, wellness, entrepreneurship, and career readiness. Keep in mind, we also, just further down the road, also have our collaboration going with Santa Fe College, where we are having um, adult education with certificate training. So we're also seeing a good idea or something for us to explore with that Lofton Facility area, the Grow Hub, the GET Program, as well as Duval. I think there's some synergy that we're hoping to be able to explore uh, with the city, with the county, with our nonprofits, as well as our for-profits within the community. We see this as definitely something that we would like to continue discussions with the Friendship Seven, Children's Trust, nonprofit partners, for-profit partners, private philanthropy. And we're also interested in how to, how was this going to be modeled out as far as governance and all of that? And I think there's a few o- options that we'd like to look at, including a possibility of a co-op type of situation. Um, we do have an immediate opportunity, and so uh, Dr. Craig and Dr. Champion will discuss this. They will also discuss that even at this point, um, they have had some uh, interest on the financial level with grants. And so um, I will let them present this.
Good aft- good evening again, everyone. Uh, we're going to talk today specifically um, about an opportunity that we are partnering uh, as a team with the city of Gainesville, uh, the One Nation One Project uh, grant from the League of uh, Cities.
So the One Nation One Project initiative is an opportunity that was presented to us uh, for a national arts and wellness project where basically, city by city, cities would be selected to participate as part of a cohort of 18 cities across the country who would each create and produce their own large-scale arts project, all to be debuted on the same day in 2024. Uh, the project is grounded uh, in the idea that COVID has stalled a lot of community and uh, community cohesion uh, in cities across the country, that the social fabric in our cities are frayed, the communities are fractured, and as a result, the health of our people has been ravaged. And so this is a way to bring the tools for recovery, repair, and rebuilding to everyone. This project, which is entitled "Improving Community Health and Resilience Through the Arts", seeks to leverage the power of the arts to support city leaders in their efforts to improve health, cohesion, and resilience of their communities. So this would be a collaboration between the city, local artists and arts organizations, and other community organizations, as well as community health centers. And again, they would be working together collaboratively across all of those organizations and entities to pilot and create a large-scale arts project uh, that would work to foster wholeness and wellness within the citizens. And we have presented this to the city of Gainesville with the notion of creating a project that would help to mitigate some of the uh, underlying effects that lead to gun violence in Gainesville, since that's been noted as an issue that has been important to the community. Uh, again, these are some of the proven health impacts of the arts. Arts participation is associated with better mental health, lower risk of depression, enhanced health behaviors, reduced loneliness. And also, there are some social and economic impacts as well. Increases in solving local challenges and problem-solving, leading to increases in civic participation, job creation, reduction in income disparities, reduction in crime, and higher graduation rates and lower dropout rates. And these are some of the things that we hope to see that a large-scale initiative like this or participating in a large-scale initiative like this would help to lead to in our city. The underlying idea is that arts have the power to change lives, cities belong to everyone, and health is a fundamental human right. And so we're seeking through this project, where the project is seeking to building ecology of change towards justice, belonging, and an opportunity for cross-sector partnerships. I'm going to s- oh, well, actually, I will say this. These are actually not the slides.
Yes, okay.
But um, so as I said before, there are going to be 18 cities that are chosen as part of this initial cohort. Um, each city that's interested would have to apply through an RFP process, fill out a kind of application and be selected based on their uh, collaboration between the city and other organizations within the city. Uh, you would have basically two years to work on the project. And the city would have to commit 2% of their American Rescue Plan Act funds, which the city of Gainesville, City Commission, has agreed that they will commit. And uh, as a result of that, would receive $20,000 in planning funds from the One Nation One Project Initiative. And then we would work together to create a project around the theme, "There's No Place Like Home." And in 2024, 18 cities would share their stories on the same day at the same time. So I think I'm going to pause here with the slides because I'm not exactly sure what's coming next. But I do want to say that we envisioned this as an opportunity to seed programming and to create a project around and in the space of Duval Early Learning Center uh, as a way to start this opportunity of developing into a cultural arts space. So the, the um, activities that will come out of developing this particular project for this particular initiative, which would essentially start very soon and take place over the course of the next two years, we see as the building blocks for spaces that get created, for murals that get created, and for programs that get created that then could continue to be a part of that space and other spaces across the city of Gainesville. Uh, these are some of the partners for the One Nation One Project. Uh, some of the supporting national partners, which would also be contributing their help in terms of technical production, artistic resources. We have Bad Robots, the J.J. Abrams Production Company that produced Alias and Star Trek and Mission Impossible, Adventureland, the production company that produced Hamilton and Rent and then Heights, uh, the University of Florida Center for Arts and Medicine, the National League of Cities, of course, and community health centers. So yeah, I think that's it. Oh, end this. So this will be it. Uh, the things that we would get out of this, out of participating in this initiative include national recognition and media coverage. So there would be a documentary that's created about these 18 cities that participate and their process of creating this uh, project. Uh, we would be leveraging the power of arts to support efforts to improve mental and physical health, community cohesion and resilience, uh, providing a productive outlet for Gainesville youth and community members, uh, involving community and productive activities that would redirect negative behaviors, and leveraging the tremendous expertise that exists around the city around the topic of arts and health. All right, I'm going to stop right there.
Um, and in closing, in many ways, um, as Superintendent Simon said earlier, we're excited about the, this moment, being able to leverage the opportunity uh, that the city coming on with this project uh, allows us to begin to organize. Um, that there's great needs in our community right now, and we believe that the arts can play a role in being part of the solution. Uh, this is not the one magical bullet that's going to solve all of the problems that we have, but it can have some of the significant um, progress, change, and transformation uh, that many of us are looking for. And not just for just the children, but really transforming the entire community, the, the families at the core. The, allowing multi-generations to be able to have access to high-quality arts programming is something that people move to other cities for. And it's something that we in our community deserve and something that we're excited to be a partner in. Thank you.
So what we were hoping in this presentation was to catch you up on where we've been in a very um, organic situation with our collaboration with the nonprofits who immediately needed the space, to now having interests that we think has the ability to grow and really take that facility to uh, a place where it serves the community in more of a non-traditional fashion, but with the collaboration with our nonprofits. We think there's many opportunities here to make this a space that is occupied um, uh, quite often, as though it's more like a park space where people come and go and they take classes. We have some interests specifically with arts and medicine to have this place be a place for healing, both physically, mentally, and you know, obviously with the, the arts and having that type of emotional connection. So we wanted to present this to you all. Uh, we have, as we're stating here, we have interests with the city. I believe we have interests with Children's Trust and with the county, and so we're hoping to have them as well speak. But we would like to have some additional time to have Duval to still remain as its current state and allow us to explore our opportunities and to see how we can really manifest this into something quite big. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Simon and all, all of our guests. I'd like to uh, ask Commissioner Wheeler to uh, speak. And, and I, I, I know she, you know, Ms. Wheeler is an arts colleague, one of my arts colleagues for many years. We're actually the same age, so uh-
I was in the 1969-
Exactly. But you're uh- You've, you've, you're doing a lot better than I am for that age. But anyway, uh, please share your thoughts about this.
Well, thank you very much. When I first met our new commissioner, um, I, we realized that we were both arts people. And so that gave us an instant place to begin work together. And when she presented, I saw the presentation to the city the other day and got really excited. I thought, "Well, this woman is not letting any mosque grow under her feet. She's, she's out there doing it." Um, and as an art teacher, I was there at Westwood for 22 years, and I remember so many years coming in to put art up on these walls. And uh, it's been a real treat to be where I feel most comfortable in the world is, is in this school boardroom with all of you. Um, but I'm going to say too that um, I taught middle school art. It's a great way to get to know a kid through the arts, as, as I know you know as well. And I used to tell the kids, I said, "You know, everybody speaks art." I had ESE kids, I had ESOL kids, I had everybody. Uh, when I first got to Florida, there wasn't much art. I had a master's in art education from Eastern Kentucky University. Got here and there wasn't any art. You pretty well had to inherit those jobs. So I got a degree in special education at the University of Florida in behavior disorders. And you know, in middle school, we're kind of all behavior-disordered, even the teachers, you know, you have to be in order to function well there. But what I would say is that um, art is the best. A lot of my kids came in for art, and a lot of them came in for art therapy. But in terms of what the arts provide, there is a place for everybody in the arts. And I, I can't, I'm, can't believe that our Board of County Commissioners would not be wholeheartedly supportive of a program like this. We just have, of course, the question is, "How are we going to fund it?" So you know, I think between you and me and everybody else here that we can figure out a way to do that funding and to make sure that there are kids. Because I tell you, the after-school programs are great, but after a kid has worked real hard and struggled through the day trying to get through their classes, they need something, a different approach to, to getting those, the academics in. And the arts is a great way to do that. So I will do whatever I can from our side to make sure that we, we have this given the full attention it deserves. So thank you so much for letting me be here to support this and to work again with people I know so well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And um, have a comment for Ms. Surtin.
I actually didn't have a comment. I had a request, if I could. I see there are several people here, um, Mr. Murphy, the ED for the trust, and one of the nonprofits is here. I'm not sure of any, um, anyone else. But I was wondering if we could let them, if they were here in support of that project, let them go ahead and speak now, um, instead of at the end of the meeting and the second public comment.
Uh, I, I think, I think that would be fine if we have any of the folks that are here from the nonprofits. And um, um, feel, feel free not to speak too longly, too long. Excuse me, made up a word there. We, in our home, we call that being vocabulary-ic. Uh, so um-
Hello, Anne Katerba. Um, I am the board president for Aces in Motion, and I do want to thank the school district for basically taking our organization into Duval um, as a pilot project. Um, it's been very helpful to us for sure, but I hope that it's also helpful for the school district to see what is possible when an after-school, when after-school programs, nonprofits collaborate, when you let us in, and how, how that can be very synergistic and beneficial to our community. Um, so I wanted to go back to another activity that I did at the Jonesville Park um, back in the early 2000s when um, the Alachua County bought 100 acres from IFIS, from uh, the UF Foundation, and decided to make a regional park. However, they're, they really weren't in the business of active recreation at that point, or really still are. Um, and it really, it, it sat fallow. It was, you know, 100 acres that took all the hurricane debris. So it just sat there for years until a coalition of people came together. And what it took is private money, it took nonprofit money, it took dedicated people, um, it took an interest in collaboration with the governmental agency, this, in this case, Alachua County. Um, and that whole collaboration created a beautiful park at Jonesville, beautiful regional park. Each piece of it was paid for with a different partnership, whether it be Rotary, Gainesville Soccer Alliance, the tennis community. So we have, if anybody hasn't been out there on a Saturday to see how busy that park is. Um, that never would have happened if everybody would have stayed in their little bubbles or in their silos and not collaborated. I do think that this is not exactly the same thing, but certainly a funding model is very important for the school district to figure out. And I think that given the partners we potentially have in this arena, that we could be, this could be a fabulous collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, anyone else, I'm sure?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Colin Murphy from the Children's Trust. I'll be brief. Um, I didn't get a chance to see the city presentation, so this was excellent. Uh, I'm very excited that the National League of Cities is involved. I had great experience in two other projects with them, providing technical assistance in the past. So anything we can be, do to be helpful, to um, win the support on behalf of the city for the project, we, you know, our staff would be uh, would jump right in and help. Both Dr. Simon and uh, Member Surtin are on the Children's Trust Board, as you know, and they've been very successful in promoting their policy agenda. So I think I'll be working on Duval Elementary. So I look forward to it, and I look forward to working everyone here to, to make it work. Thank you.
Anne, I, I thank you very much. I will say that um, you know, the long, long process to have the Children's Trust, how exciting that is that, that we have the Children's Trust, and that took so much effort and so much, you know, so many people working hard for that to be a reality. Uh, it's also, for me, it's great to see uh, the professors from the College of Arts. Um, I, I hear from the College of Arts very often that it's usually asking for money. But um, uh, and it, it's always a, a- But, and it's always a worthy give. And I do appreciate so much, I owe so much to, well, I'm so old, it was, back then, it was the College of Architecture and Fine Arts. So, but anyway, thank you for making us, the University of Florida, an arts university, and that's, it doesn't just happen. So thank you so much. So if we're... Okay. I think I'm going to make a judgment call here, just that we have... Can I help you, sir?
I was just going to be very brief and thank the district, but if you're, if time is up, we...
Well, I think we need to do this, and I always like thanking, but we need to move on. And Mr. Bailey, would you be able to wait until the next, on this? Okay, well, go ahead and go to the microphone.
Pardon me, just as, if you would give me the time allotted, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mr. Stapleton, a part of the group that is in it. And when this gentleman, Kennedy, if they could...
Well, okay, I didn't have any...
Just briefly again, my name's Dusty Bailey.
If we could start the clock now, thank you.
Thank you very much for the time. Again, as an educator, I know and see in the classroom how important the arts are. A lot of my students have the opportunity to do their vocabulary words by artistic expression and drawings rather than just looking them up in the dictionary and using sentences and such. I say that all to say that the arts is not a, something that should be one-sided, if you will. Just a matter of note, the One Nation, One Project organization appears to be funded by the Tides Center and the Tides Foundation. Those major donors are the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Ford Foundation, and a very familiar name, the George Soros Open Society. So before any votes towards what Duval is utilized for, I think that there should be a little more understanding of who those financial sponsors would be and to figure out what the actual agenda of the artistic expression would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And I think I have maybe opened up, I think that was a mistake of mine. I probably should have gone ahead with the next part of the meeting. But if I could have, yield to Dr. McNeely's suggestion, and if you two would please let us hear what we need to hear. Thank you.
We'll be brief. Just wanted to thank you for the presentation, but also for allowing Aces in Motion to be, to give us space in such a time of need. And so I wanted to thank you and also remind, thank you for, Aces in Motion started eight years ago on Howard Bishop campus and through helping the 21st Century After-School program there. And now to see that campus revitalized and new basketball and tennis courts there and a grand opening hopefully there pretty soon. It's really a testament to what happens when nonprofits and the school district and collaboration is at mind. And I also wanted to brag on Adriana because she was a student at Howard Bishop Middle School during that time, when I was just volunteering one day a week at Howard Bishop. Eight years later, Adriana graduated from Eastside High and is now working for Aces. Well, she's actually working for AmeriCorps as a vista, as an up-to-us coach, giving back to the community and teaching students how to play tennis at the very same schools and very same students that she was once at Howard Bishop and Eastside now. So I just wanted to kind of use that as an example of what's possible and use that as an example of, one, just to brag on her and how proud I am of her, but also this is, I think, a vision that we're all looking for. Thank you so much and thank you for your time.
And Adriana, do you want to say something?
Yes. So just as a brief introduction, hi, my name is Adriana Mosley. I grew up in East Gainesville. I went to Duval when the arts, I was a part of the arts. And being a part of the arts really kind of made me want to stay in different types of programs so that way I wouldn't be out doing just whatever. I feel like knowing people really kind of just put me out there. So I know Ms. Angela Terro, who was the one who put me with the Star Center Children's Theater. And then I moved on, started coming to Aces in Motion. It was kind of by accident, actually. And then I just fell in love with tennis, and I decided that I wanted to stay here and just give back to the kids and kind of pass on the journey and the things that I've learned so that way they can grow and just keep giving out to the community and do what I did.
Well, Adriana, we're so proud of you. And I know this isn't what we normally do in a board meeting, but I'd like, see if we could all give Adriana a round of applause. Wait, okay, so Assistant, excuse me, City Manager Curry, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. My name is Cynthia Curry. I am interim city manager for the city of Gainesville. I'd like to just add that the commission did agree to commit approximately $650,000. That's what it equates to from our offer allocation to support the application with the National League of Cities. I also wanted to add that this is a very organic process. It is at its beginnings, and I have been asked by the city commission to serve as the working group lead, if you will, trying to pull together all of the partners in the community to bring this project to a planning point where we can, again, share it with you, the county commission, of course, the citizens of the community in general. But it is organic. The funding sources will evolve, the planning process will evolve as it relates to our facilities and logistics side of this and the programming side of it. So we have a ways to go, and I just wanted to add that.
Thank you very much. And anything I can do to help personally, please contact me. Okay. So that was, you know, that took a long time, and I felt like it was worth every second. And I, you know, that, it's, you know, you have to, when there are chances, there are opportunities, the very least you can do is explore them. Because I think what we're, you know, we're always looking for what's best or what's there to help every child. And I really, really appreciate the effort of the city, appreciate the collaboration with the university, and, of course, the interest of our county commission as well. So thank you very much. And I'm so glad, Dr. McNeely, that you made that suggestion to have those folks speak because that's about the highlight of my night so far. That was great. So, okay, we're going to move ahead with the consent agenda. Dr. Simon.
Thank you, Chair Hyatt. I would like to recommend that the board accept consent agenda items 2 through 16.
Do I hear a motion?
No move. Second.
Motion by Dr. McNeely, second by Ms. Surtin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes for zero. Okay, we've already done the public hearing, so Mr. Shalnut.
Good evening, Chair Hyatt, board members, Dr. Simon. The first action item is employee case 2021-22-0561-12. And the superintendent recommends that the board suspend the employee with pay for a period not to exceed 90 calendar days. Such suspension to continue thereafter without pay pending a final resolution of the disciplinary, excuse me, disciplinary proceedings.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair. Okay.
Motion by Ms. Surtin, second by Dr. McNeely. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes for zero. Next is the ESER grant and community survey. And I'm going to ask, if this is an action item, before we get started, we need to have a motion. And is that correct, Mr. Delaney?
In terms of, we can have presentation and the recommendation from the superintendent.
And then, so it's fine to have the presentation, and then before we have public input, we go for motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll work. Okay, Mr. Coles.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Simon. My name is Prescott Coles. I'm a special projects manager here in the school district office. Over the past year, spending a lot of time on COVID. When I'm not COVID testing, like this morning, I'm working on putting together things like this. This second agenda item, action item for tonight, is the grant application package for the American Rescue Plan ESER funds, which is the elementary and secondary school relief funds. So this presentation will be brief. It'll just be giving some context, it won't get into the weeds, and then we'll make the recommended action, as Chair Hyatt said. So just for some context about what ESER funds are, and you've probably heard a lot about it over the past year. It is part of the American Rescue Plan Act that was passed in March 2021. These funds have been allocated to school districts to address the impact that the pandemic has had and continues to have on the students and families who depend on our K-12 schools. Included in the allowable expenses, and there are many of them, these funds were provided to help districts safely reopen schools, restore and maintain high-quality learning environments, measure and effectively address the impact of lost instructional time, meet students' social, emotional, and mental health needs, address longstanding resource inequities, and take on other actions to mitigate the impact of COVID-19. The grant itself is broad because there are so many ways that this pandemic has impacted our schools and our students. And so there is some flexibility with how the district chooses to use these funds. This is, the American Rescue Plan is ESER III. It's the third round of emergency relief funds that the district has received. The first one ended in September 21. That was ESER I. ESER II, which was about a little more than $25 million, the board approved the first version of that in this last September. And this package, this round right here, is ESER III, which extends until September 30, 2024. Among all those three grants combined, it's about $90 million to help support the district respond to and recover from the pandemic. One of the initiatives that we did in forming this, a plan for how the district can use these funds, was involving the stakeholders. This is a requirement of the grant, but it's also, we know that we need to hear the voices of the people that this money will impact. So to briefly review the results of our community survey that we did at the end of December, I'm going to invite Thomas Vu from the Office of Evaluation, Accountability, and Data Analytics. The entire package is on the board doc's website, but he's just going to give you some headlines.
Good evening, everyone. As Prescott said, my name is Thomas Vu, and I work in the Office of Evaluation, Accountability, and Data Analytics. So on December 1st, we released the ARP ESER Community Input Survey to the community. It was distributed to students, high school students specifically, and parents through email and text message. It was available in English and Spanish. The media also reported it and distributed the link to the greater public at large. It was also distributed through ACPS social media accounts, where it was retweeted and shared. We also made paper copies available at school for anyone who could not fill it out through technological means. And before we start this, I just wanted to thank all of our respondents. It was really important to hear feedback from the community for helping the district decide how to spend this money and budget it. 2,057 responses were recorded. Of those, 1,376 are current or prospective ACPS parents or guardians. 474 teachers responded, current ACPS teachers. Of those, 241 are current ACEA union members. Of the high school students that we distributed this to, 146 of them responded and contributed. In addition to that, 126 ACCPTA and PTA members responded. In addition to that as well, 122 ACPS staff members, non-teachers, responded to the survey. And you can see an overall distribution of the demographics there, and it'll also be available on the report on the district website. Just some key takeaways that we just wanted to highlight here. Of all the respondents that filled out the survey, 66 supported funds to address students' social, emotional, and mental well-being. And you'll find that this is a theme throughout the survey and through many of the questions and respondent suggestions. Another theme there is 58% supported putting these funds toward addressing student learning loss. 57% want improvements to our facilities, things like HVAC and just upgrading our facilities in general. And 51% support additional support for our special student populations, and that's like English language learners and ESE students. Our questions were also based around our district guiding principles. And from that, in a lot of these questions, especially the ones that addressed academics, 75% support additional staff to support the student learning loss during the pandemic. Other questions focus on transparency, and of those, 67% support updates on the district website about how we use the ESER grant. Other questions supporting data-driven and technology in the district, 56% will want a continued emphasis on improving our district's technology. And just some other key priorities. Other suggestions from the community include raising teacher salaries, a seven-period day for students, a one-to-one technology ratio, and increasing transparency. And just something to note from that, some of these common priorities, like salary and working conditions, are subject to collective bargaining with the ACEA. And we can review the entire community input survey report on the district website and the board agenda online. All right, thank you.
So this community survey was a part of a larger community engagement effort that is ongoing. Included in that was multiple meetings with the District Advisory Council. If you're unfamiliar, District Advisory Council has representatives from each school in the district to kind of highlight what each different school's priorities were. We had a workgroup meeting with the ACEA. We met with Teacher Advisory Council. And again, that survey was the first of several. Included in the creation of this plan is not just what people had to say about it, but we've got other data that can inform what the district's priorities may be, including the school district's data, the academic data, the behavior data, and some of the disproportionate impacts that the pandemic has had on our students. We've consulted with the Florida Department of Education, the United States Department of Education. We used the information we got from our instructional climate survey from last spring. And because Florida was four months late in submitting their application to the United States government... States government, we had a lot of time to review, research best practices, and see what other states and districts did when they were planning their funds. And again, this is just the beginning of the stakeholder engagement process. And I'm going to turn it over to our Chief of Finance, Alex Rella, to talk about kind of the next steps with where we go from here.
Thank you, Prescott. Alex Rella, Chief of Finance. As you can see from all the literature attached and included in the presentation, we've been extremely busy between the superintendent and staff, behind the scenes, working really hard and diligently to kind of pull this all together. When you look at the sum of money for the American Rescue Plan, a little over 61 million, you could really spend two years planning that. We had a little over a month. So I definitely want to thank all the group members, most of the people in the crowd that our staff had some kind of hand in developing and kind of guiding this process. But it was very intensive. We're luckily getting towards the end of the process. As you can see here, as we went through our planning process, we kind of created different priority areas. Of course, at the top is going to be teaching and learning and addressing the learning loss that's associated with the pandemic. The mental health and wellness is really important, especially for students, but for staff members, for everyone, it's just such a challenge right now. And then, you know, maintaining the safe and healthy facilities is kind of a paramount baseline for us. We have some strategies to address that. And developing skilled workforce, I think something that came through to me from Dr. Simon from the very beginning is we need to invest in our people. And how do we do that? We do that with professional development. We help them with leadership. We help them and give them the tools that they need to be successful and help the student outcomes. And then engaging and empowering families and systems of coordination. Both of those are key to success with this round of funds. So next steps, obviously, at this point, we're going to be asking for the board to approve the grant package, and we will subsequently submit that to the Department of Ed. They have an internal plan review and approval process from the folks that I've spoken to. They're being a little bit more expeditious with the processing and not necessarily getting real nitpicky as they were necessarily on the first round of funds. And then from there, once we have approval from the DOE, of course, we're going to be appropriating all these funds down to our departments. So curriculum and professional development and ESE and equity can kind of start the work that's needed over the next three years. And in one piece that we've talked about a lot internally is the stakeholder engagement. As you can see, that's where we spent most of our slides on. We feel that's really important. We want to continue that work as we kind of move in and realizing that this is a three-year grant, and we kind of need to keep going back to the community what's working, what isn't. In terms of the flexibility and responsiveness of the plan, I think we all kind of recognize the fact that the circumstances and the priorities that exist as of January 2022 are probably going to look different than they're going to look in September 24. So I think that's one piece that's really big for us is evaluation of the program. What are we doing? What are our strategies? Are we looking back and seeing if those strategies are effective? And I think we're all really big on data. There's anecdotal stuff, which of course is important, but we, you know, the end game is to see the data and to be able to evaluate those individual programs as we kind of move through the process. And I think we kind of talked a little bit about starting that this spring, but I imagine quarterly, biannual, annual reviews of the programs and what's being implemented. The other thing is, you know, the priorities, we understand they're going to change. They're just, it's just kind of the nature of it. So having some flexibility built within the grant and again, doing the program evaluation piece. Collective bargaining, as has been mentioned before, will have a play in this. So we are looking forward to those conversations, of course, as always with the ACA. And then we anticipate a lot of amendments to the grant, and that's really driven by the three things you see above with collective bargaining priorities and just program evaluation. And then, of course, we want to finalize a continuity plan. One thing we've talked about a lot is how do we land the plane, I think, as Dr. Simon likes to say. But how do we get, how do we take all of these hopefully very successful strategies and mitigation strategies that have, you know, had this hopefully really profound impact on our students and work environment? And how do we continue those as we, the grant sunsets in 2024? So that's really at the back of our mind from the very beginning of this process is, you know, even now, starting to think about how do we incorporate this into other funding sources, general fund, et cetera. We're really, really excited and looking forward to the evaluation process. That's what I'm probably most interested in, is seeing how successful these strategies are, because we have a lot of really talented people that helped develop, and we're really excited about that. Included in the, in some of the documentation that was online in the agenda, we have four items, and I wanted to just really quickly look at those. If you look at the presentation, these are all linked in. The first, and I'm not going to spend very much time, but I just wanted to give the board and maybe even the community, if they're listening, a little bit of frame of reference. But the first is the actual grant application itself. And as you can see, this is a Department of Ed grant. It kind of outlines our ESER plan and our implementation plan and gets into, you know, a lot of really important stuff, like how are we addressing learning loss? And ties in the individual strategies to the activity. And as we look at the budget, those all kind of tie in together. It is a rather lengthy document. I think it's 18 pages, but a lot of it is just not necessarily information that applies to the grant itself, or at least pieces that we're not necessarily using. But this is a really good one-stop shop if you, if anyone wants to see, you know, what are we doing for learning loss? What are we doing for student and employmental health, et cetera? It's a good resource. The next one is the actual budget itself, which again is a DOE form template that was provided. And you can see, there's a lot of boring accounting stuff on here that nobody cares about but me and my staff. But then there's also some really good, this is really high-level information on the, you know, the account in terms of the program. What are we doing? Are there FT positions associated with it? And then which pot of money it's kind of coming out of? It's just kind of like a very high-level summary of that. I'm not going to click on the community input survey summary, but it is a very extensive, really, really nice report of all the responses we received. You can go very high-level or very, very detailed. It was well put together and has a lot of information. The last piece that pertains to budgetary items is our funding request. So we set up an internal process by which department heads, subject area experts could submit requests for funding from their specific area, whether it's ESE, teaching and learning, equity, professional development. And what we did is we had a lot of meetings, kind of going through, collecting all these applications. Of course, there's information budget-wise that I need to make sure is on there, but really kind of consolidating all those different requests and, you know, sitting down and saying, this looks good, let's adjust this, maybe we should direct funds here, et cetera. We did include all those in the application. The only reason, or one of the reasons I feel like it's important is it has a lot more detail in terms of the students and subgroups that are being targeted with the funding and has proposed start dates, end dates, if it extends beyond the grant period. And that's going to allow us to hopefully identify those successful strategies that we want to kind of continue going forward. And that concludes my presentation, Chairman. Would you like me to read the recommendation?
Please, Ms. Rella.
Superintendent recommends the board approve the American Rescue Plan as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
On a second. Motion by Ms. Surtin, second by Dr. McNeely. At this point, we will have public input, and we have one person signed up to speak on this, and that's Kathy Black.
Thank you, Chairman Hyatt. Good evening and good evening to the board members and to Superintendent Simon. I'm going to change a little bit about what I was about to say, because I was going to ask you to hold a workshop. It appears you've kind of had the workshop along with motion. Unfortunately, it's not been done in a way in which the board can ask questions or the public is here. Part of the direction in the application is to engage the public. And people have done a tremendous job in this district, doing surveys, getting the information, putting it together. It's there, and I want to say that. I want to say it is there. What has not happened at the conclusion is now we have the application, let's put it forward, let's engage the public, let's ask them what they think, let's look at the budget. All of the things that have gone through here tonight, if it had been done in a workshop where you could ask questions, where the public could ask questions, then that would have been transparent. It does not appear to be transparent to some of the citizens. This is a huge amount of money. It is a game changer for all of our children. We will never see this again. You need the help of the community. The community wants to help you. So I would say engage them on the front end, allow them to give their input, whether you accept it or not, allow them the opportunity to speak. And unfortunately, that has not happened. You're going to be asked tonight to vote for this, and we don't want to give this money back. Our children need it. But we want to know that the community is behind you and where these funds are allocated. So I don't know now if I'm going to ask you what I did in the email, which is to not vote for it and hold a public hearing, or if I'm going to ask you to expand upon this presentation. Because typically in a board meeting, you get a motion, a second, you get a recommendation, motion second. Now we've had a lot of presentation, which is unusual. So I just want to point that out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else in the, in the room that would like to speak to this? No, anyone on the phone? So we'll proceed to, okay, Ms. McCann.
Thank you, Chair Hyman and board members. I agree with Kathy Black that this is a lot of money. And obviously, the district has gone through a lot of work, asked a house to spend the money, but it's taxpayer money. I'm a taxpayer. I want to know where this money is going. I want to understand things in the budget and how the money is going to be spent. And I don't know. No one knows. It looks very autocratic in a lot of ways to me and to others. And in my history of being a counselor, a teacher, a past union president, I haven't seen this kind of thing happen before. We've always had workshops where the public has been involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCann. Anyone else? We still have that one on the phone? Okay, very good. We'll go ahead to board member comments. Okay, Ms. Surtin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank staff for the info. I do want to say, and I was glad Prescott, Mr. Coles brought that out, that the DOE submitted their packet to the Federal Department of Education four months late. And we received the template, if I'm not mistaken, after that happened, after the state submitted that. But I do, I had some questions, and I reached out to staff to, today, and I had had a conversation with Mr. Coles as well as Dr. Simon. But my concern, when citizens come up and they say that something isn't transparent, that really bothers me. And I've been, I've been attending, as a citizen, board meetings I attended for a number of years, I think 2016, in the, in the room, in this room, and prior to that, watching on the public access channel. And there are a number of grants that this organization, down through the years, recurring grants that came through, oftentimes just as the TISA grant came through tonight on the consent agenda, and never received any pushback. I do agree with the citizens, this is life-changing, system-changing, what we would hope, just game-changing. I said to Ms. Wise today, in my conversation with her on the questions that I had, is we got to make sure, Ms. Wise, that we, we change things, because with, with the amount of money that the American Rescue Plan, these ESER funds are bringing to Alachua County, the state of Florida, and the United States of America, if we don't get it right, we give the folks who are wanting to privatize public education, all the ammunition that they need, because we would say it is not in the money. We gave you plenty of money. And Ms. Wise is sitting back there, and she'll tell you that. So for me as a board member, and I would say my colleagues here, I think those of y'all know that I do come with a financial background, and I tend to, I don't know education policy like the educators in the room who have been up speaking. I don't know that. I read a lot of articles and I ask a lot of questions, but the finance portion of it, I do know. So the questions that I had today, I'm just going to throw them out there to you guys. I asked Mr. Rella. I see we got $12 million in classroom technology. When we buy in with $12 million with the classroom technology out of ESER funds, when we got Title, we have the mill that pays for classroom technology. So we're going to then be shifting and replacing funds that we would normally spend out of the mill, which is a voter-approved initiative. What are we going to do with that money then? Those are some questions I asked. I said, have we, the beyond the bell, are we sure that the students who have COVID learning losses, are they being reached? Are we sure of that? So I just want the citizens to know in the room and those who are at home that this board member is very concerned about the money being used properly. And that is my, that will be, I will lead with that type of advocacy, because the students that this is supposed to impact look like me. And ever since I sat in this seat here, I have a concern about all 29,000 students, but I have said from day one that my focus is on those students, 70% of them who are, we don't have to like the state grading and assessment system. I don't like it. I think it's too much testing. But about 70% of them are not proficient, and they look like me. So I have a grave concern about that. I was hollering for community engagement and to listen to us. I was ignored. That's the reason why I decided to run. So I respect Ms. Black, I respect your opinion, and I respect yours, Ms. McCann. But I also want you to know that it really, I really want you to work with us and not work against us, because the students that look like me have been hurting longer than November 2018, when I sat in this seat. Longer than 2021, when she got in her seat. They were hurting and they were suffering. Parents felt like they were ignored. And I've said that many a times. So I'm a little bit passionate. I'm sorry, I'm way off course on this. I want us to approve this. I'm not exactly happy with everything that's in here and how it is. But Mr. Rella and Ms. Wise told me they had to get a grant package in and submit it to get this in to say, and they would have budget amendment. So I have to trust the staff that they're going to come back to us as a board, and they will provide us with information so that we can make evaluations of programs and initiatives to ensure that we are getting bang for our buck, the juice is worth the squeeze, if it is really having any impact on who we need. But I also question the money that was spent on projectors. I question some stuff about the community engagement and how we're doing that. Ms. Wise, I tell you, I had a whole lot of questions. I wanted to know how it was going to come, because for me, I'm concerned about student attendance. And I didn't just get concerned about student attendance and parent engagement with this money. I was asking those questions out of Title I money, because there's a community engagement portion on that. And with, with parents, parental engagement with that. And I said, what are we doing differently? What is in our plan to do different from what we've done in previous years? What tactics are we going to use? So I hear you. It's her, I hear you, and I will indeed be respecting that. I'm welcome to meet with you if you have any suggestions, and I will take your comments and your input and seriously consider them and pass them on to Superintendent and her staff. But I do hear you, and I want you to know, because, because when, when all the dust settles, and in September 24, when this money is gone, I want us to be able to come back to our local citizens and the parents. I want us to be able to say to the federal government, this is what we did, and this is the change that it had on the students in Alachua County. And this is the change that it had on the students in Alachua County. Because with just the regular funding that we've gotten, and the Title I, and the TISA, and the UNICEF, and the Title II and IV and all of that, we haven't done a good job. I, we have not. With the students that look like me. I'm not putting it all on the staff, because our community and the families have some. This is a team effort. But we ain't going to get far if we fighting each other and all that. Because I'm going to tell you, the folks that look like me feel like we have not been served by this district. And that's not my first time saying that. We got to build trust and work together to move forward. Can't just be I, me, and my. Can't just be about one group. But I'm telling you, this is indeed life-changing money. I do, I agree with you. And I don't want us to squander it and just spend it on all willy-nilly. And it just goes up and poof, and we don't have, and we don't have any noticeable changes in our student outcomes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Surtin. Mrs. Russell?
I have a question about... We've already purchased the air purifiers. Is that correct? They're in every schoolroom already. And that is in the budget. And also, I wanted to ask about the HVAC unit replacement. Is that one unit? And where is it? I mean, are we, is some of this to reimburse the district for money already spent?
Chairman, if I could address those questions. So in terms of the first question, the air purifiers, you're absolutely correct. Those air purifiers were purchased, I want to say, early September and kind of distributed the same month. Unfortunately, at that time, we had fully allocated our SR2 funds. But luckily, knowing the ARP, the American Rescue Plan funding was on the way, we felt comfortable with it. And then in terms of the grant guidelines, you can go back to March of 2020 in terms of reimbursement. We haven't looked at a lot of that. But certainly in this instance, in terms of looking at the air purifiers with no other available funding sources, we thought it was appropriate to put all of those in the classroom. I think it was a really good idea. And in terms of the HVAC projects, we had Shane, Mr. Andrew and his team develop a list of the highest priority kind of units in HVAC and controls and outside air units. I think we kind of realized really early on, we could probably spend 200 million on that. So what we did is really kind of narrow the scope on that and try to hit some of the units that we know are either bad or failing and to address the internal, you know, the internal classroom environment, which has a big impact on student achievement and transmission of viruses. We found certain units were not working or very, working in a very limited way. So we felt, you know, especially when we were talking about one-time expenses and, you know, trying to figure out how we, you know, defund the grant, et cetera. It seemed like a pretty good opportunity to save some money on electricity and improve the environment for our teachers and especially our students and try to help with some of the transmission issues that we've seen. I don't know if that answered your question.
I agree with that because I think, again, clean air is one of the safest and most effective things we can do to provide a safe environment. How many HVAC units is this, is in this budget?
Off the top of my head, I want to say it's around 10 actual units or school sites. What we're kind of looking at now is when you get into a school, does it make sense to do the entire school? Or are you just looking at single units? So in terms of the cost, it's a little bit of a guessing game, for the most part, until you get the engineering done and you know the specs and kind of the scope of the project. So what we've done is developed a list of those units that, again, was kind of vetted by Mr. Melander and Eddie Sousa and Shane, and of course Suzanne, kind of went through that list and fine-tuned it and said, what's the absolute highest priorities we have? And looked at those units. We also looked at some control packages at our schools. We unfortunately still have some analog controls, which are like the old ones. You kind of move like that. Not very good for building automation. And then again, outside air units were a big priority. We have some of those that aren't working at 100%. We feel like that's really important to make sure we have fresh air and circulating, et cetera, in the schools.
These have not then been purchased yet and installed?
They have not. We are obviously, you know, pending tonight's vote, we'll certainly start moving forward. There is a little bit of an internal process with the Department of Ed, where they want to kind of look at the scope of what you're doing and make sure it is, you know, specifically direct HVAC and not us trying to put some other kind of scope in the project. But, you know, pending approval tonight, and I'm sure everyone's really ready to start moving forward. And given the timelines, I think we have, what, like three years left? That does give us enough time to kind of spend it again. When you look at an HVAC, it's not a one-time expense, but it's about as close as you can get. I think we get, you know, 25 years out of a unit and whatnot. And Suzanne, if you would like to add anything?
The only thing I'd like to add is, for a lot of these projects that could be campus-wide, there's going to be many campuses that are touched. In some instances, there's a simple like-for-like replacement. But for many of these, it requires design. And then we go to a task order or we actually bid projects, depending on how...
Would you repeat that, please? It's just hard to hear through a mask. Sorry.
Yes. And there's many campuses that are going to be touched in varying degrees in this package. In some instances, equipment can be exchanged like-for-like. And, okay, in many of these instances, we're going to, we're going to need design and then go to either a task order if the projected construction cost is less than 2 million, or to a bid if it's projected and estimated by the design professional to be over 2 million. So there are many campuses that will be touched to varying degrees. So it's not just simple, buy new units and install them. A lot of our, a lot of our systems are antiquated and need to be completely redesigned and replaced. And we're talking complete buildings or campus-wide projects.
Excuse me, Chair Hyatt, may I add to that?
Go ahead, Dr. Simon.
So on top of it, we also, I think what we have is a level of layering of grants and moving targets. So with this, specifically with HVAC, obviously, we have the half-sense sales tax and then we have our capital funding as well. And so we have ways of needing to improve HVAC systems and then possibly building renovations. And so there's these different levels. Obviously, we also have emergencies that occur, like, for example, on Friday, when we had a Bard system that caught fire. And our Bard systems are individual units on each classroom. So each one of those can become an issue. But in the same aspect, they are not the approach that we would want as far as an energy efficiency model. So depending on the age of the building, that comes into effect. The other thing, just to bring into this as well, is that, as an example, the many air filter systems that we have in each one of our classrooms, right now it's on this. However, FEMA has changed what they are willing to cover. And so we have additional FEMA funding that we are now requesting to see if that will be able to be shifted into the FEMA coverage. Because FEMA has agreed they're covering our PPE and COVID mitigation approaches. And we believe that these should be covered, but we still have to go through that process. So that's, I think, the bigger aspect of all of these grants, is that as new things come along, and even just like within this last month, IDEA and the ARP have increased an additional 1.6 million grant that's come in. So we're finding also that as we're trying to do these plans, we're getting additional grants, or grants are expanding what they're able to cover, as well as we're now bringing this into, you know, negotiating how our mills are involved and additional tax revenue. So it's, we're trying to make sure that we can move dollars into certain funds to serve us most, to get the most return on these investments. And agreed, we do see this as a life-changing approach. And a lot of these things, we're trying to be careful and flexible at the same exact time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Simon. Ms. Russell, are you done? Or you had more? Dr. McNeely, did you have any thoughts there?
Thank you so very much. And to the staff and teams who had to work diligently, this had to take an enormous amount of time. I didn't get any calls from anyone on the team. I have spoken to Dr. Simon on some aspects of funding and how it's going to be allocated. What I liked about the presentation through the writing piece, especially looking at what students would be having an opportunity for these suggestions? What staff members, principals, teachers? What type of learning would be occurring? I know there has been question as to citizen input tonight. But since 2012, and that was my time to come on this board, there were times that information was given to us. We accepted it. We voted on it. We talked about it during, before the vote and asked questions of the team members who supported those particular areas. I feel confident that I will still be able to do that. I am not trying to micromanage in any way possible. I've been hit on my wrist to stay out of things like that. So it's tough when the leadership is saying, let the team handle this. As much as I want to be involved in and have a lot of say based on my background, based on my experience, I'm trying very much to let the folk who are in the trenches do the work. And so with that, I have, I'm ready to, well, I do want to say something that colleague Surtin said. And I have to support her with that because she has been stating for months, a couple of years even, about what disparities exist in our system. And we may as well acknowledge it. And I think the superintendent has been doing that and trying to arrive with her team this packet of information that we have received. So first of all, to all of you that sit around the wall, thank you for your work. Because you have been doing just that. And especially the two ladies, she's looking down, the two ladies in the front office with the superintendent. They have enormous, and only if you sit up there sometimes would you know it. Am I right, Mrs. Johnson? Enormous amount of work. But then you have to look at your curriculum folk, the safety people, the people who work with the administrators. I'm looking at you. The finance person, the money man. We have to look at each person and what they have come to the table with and brought comments or recommendations. I love the pages where every little box is checked. Because that means everyone is going to have a piece of this and a piece of that. But more importantly, I know that the superintendent, in her background with finance, she is a stickler. She's worse than board member Surtin. And I'm going to call you out on it. Because she is very much content when we have money budgeted, coming under budget. Whatever we have said, we stick to it and we do that. But we must, and I have to emphasize, we must carry out everything where the students are marked in our packet, in this packet, our instructional staff, our paraprofessionals, all included. Now, I don't know if the chair is going to agree with comments tonight. But this looks like it's ready to be presented. Wherever this is going this week, it's ready to go. And we should be supporting these efforts. That's where, that's where I want to, and I'm hoping that citizens would agree with us that these areas, whether it's mental health, whether it's behavior, positive behavior, whatever areas that we have lost because of our pandemic with teaching and learning. Those are major concerns. And I'm here to tell you, I'll be sitting right with the citizens who said tonight, maybe we should have brought in more comments from the citizens. But listen, under the circumstance that we are sitting in, if you have read through this huge packet, 30-some pages, you would have to agree that the areas that have been commented on and developed, they are going to carry these through. I hold Dr. Simon and team totally responsible because they did the legwork. We just got the packet to read. But they actually had to do every single and talk about. So that's why I can't find them when I'm calling up here. Because they are all in meetings about the ESER funding. We are not going to throw this money away. None of us, well, I shouldn't, well, I'm not going to go there. I was going to say, I will be the last person for the 2024 when this money is supposed to be totally spent and gone. There may be one or two others who choose to run again and seek reelection. But we are all wanting the public to know tonight that I totally, totally support all of these pages. Who's going to monitor? The citizens, the board members, yourselves will be monitoring. What's taking place? And I know Mr. Rela, he ain't going to let a penny slip through. He doesn't let any money slip through other times. So he isn't going to start with ESER funding. And it is my understanding, when I look, we have ESER 1, 2, and 3. Is that, is that, okay, the breakdown? Okay. So I stand concerned and connected that what's been put here in writing to us, that these items will be carried out efficiently, exemplary. I'm just waiting to see what's going to take place and what's going to happen. Mr. Chair, I may have, Mr. Hyatt, something else. But as I looked through the packet at home, it's a lot of work that we are seeing is going to take place. I like the fact that you put down the number of people that you surveyed. The teachers, the parents, the students, and the total of the respondents that made comment on all of this work. Thank you for your 39 pages. It was a lot of reading to take in. Now I know what's to be expected. Chairman Hyatt, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. I will say that I've read it. I've talked to staff. I've talked to the superintendent. I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Rela, if you could head on back. And as, and I did want to say, when we compare this to other things that have happened in the past, what's happened since whenever, there's nothing really that's happened like this. We've never had 60-plus million. So it's a little hard to compare. Does it mean the comparison isn't valid? But it, you have to stretch a little bit. I was wondering if you, if you could tell me, ballpark, doesn't have to be the exact day. When did we receive the application from DOE?
We received the application, I want to say it was the first week in November, maybe like November 4th, perhaps?
Okay, first week in November. And when was the original due date?
Right. So the original deadline proposed from the Department of Ed, I think it was actually... I think it was actually two weeks later. So it was like mid to late November. And of course, all their districts, myself included, were jumping up and down. How could you possibly expect us to get a grant approved by a board with this community, community input in two weeks? So to their credit, they did revise those timelines and provided us an additional month. So that brought it the, the official due date per the grants regulations or guidelines to December seventeenth. You know, when we talked internally, we felt it was really important to have a lot of community engagement. And we wanted to take a little bit more time to not just do the community engagement, but how do we actually incorporate that into some of our thought process and, and whatnot? So we did actually request an extension, which of course the Department of Ed was fine with, to the end of this month, to give us a little bit more time to, you know, work on the grant and get the community input and things of that nature.
Well, I, you know, I really appreciate that information. And for those, you know, in the press or those listening from home, that's sort of the way things happen in Tallahassee sometimes. And it's, you know, I, I thought it was important for me to know, but I thought, I think it's important for everybody to know. And, and that, you know, we have to take this amount of money very, very seriously. But you know what? It would seem like the, the state would do that as well. But, so I, I do appreciate that. And, and, let's see. Well, I, I guess I'll leave you up here just for a little bit because I don't know whether you'd have an answer. You know, we talked today, I, I'm thinking, I didn't have a clock running, but maybe twenty minutes about the value of the fine arts. And I, I don't know if we had any fine arts as part of this grant. And do you know whether we did?
Fine arts specifically doesn't, I don't think so. I think the nature of this grant, and again, this is like a perfect example of the point I was making earlier where the priorities change, right? We just got that wonderful presentation earlier. Maybe there's something, you know, we could switch funding, but that's a really good.
No, I'm, I'm not even asking you to switch any funding. I'm, I'm just thinking that if we're, you know, the whole, I think the two key words are emergency relief. And so what, what did we lose because of the emergency? And how are we going to fix that? So that was, and, and the other, and, and I think you probably, they've given me a little clue with, again, with that timeline, which we all need to know, and I really appreciate that. Did, did principals have a chance to weigh in on this and, and, and say what their schools need? Or, or what, you know, what are, what are they notice that their teachers are, are just really struggling with? Were, were principals used as a source here?
So I definitely cannot speak for every team member. I usually, as part of my process, kind of engage the principals in some way. If I'm doing anything, I want to make sure it's getting the kind of impact. And I'm not sure if any of the team members, I'm sure, reached out to the principals. We have principal reps that kind of get involved with some of these processes, but.
But I, you know, I, I think even though the state of Florida, well, let's call it like it is, the DOE, has made it very difficult for us. You know, I, I think that the more we can reach out to our folks who are the experts, the better. So I hope as, and I really appreciate Ms. Serton's comments and, and, and that, that we need to always keep an eye on how we're spending the money and how, look who I'm talking to. All, you know, and so, and I know that's what you do. And, and I, when I talk to the state auditor, all I say about you and your team is glowing reports. And, and, and that's really what I, what I mean. So, so I think that's, that's, let, let me mention maybe two more things. And I, and before I do that, I want to say that the folks that worked on this project, the folks that were doing the heavy lifting, kudos. You know, you were given an impossible task, an absolutely impossible task. And you put in the work that, that seems almost impossible. So I, I, I wanted to thank that. And, and I, I know that sometimes things that are really good ideas and, and have the possibility to, to really work for everyone's benefit, if they aren't explained well, if, if the public doesn't understand, if a board member doesn't understand, that makes it difficult. So just, just one, I, I, I remember when this used to be a lot of money, but to talk about $250,000 with the, is it Cognia? I believe, and, and I've talked to the superintendent about this as far as strategic planning. What, what I would hope, and I don't know whether this needs to be in any part of a motion. I, I understand that we, we, first of all, the 250,000 is not anywhere close to what Cognia would be paid. But the way it looks on the chart, it, it looks like that, okay? But I, I would hope that, that we would have a full workshop and board members could, could weigh in before any contracts are signed. So I, and, and maybe I'll ask the, I'll ask Mr. Delaney if there needs to be any adjustment. I, now, I do agree with Dr. McNeely that we don't really have any logical choice about applying for this money. We have none. You know, we, so I wanted to ask about that. And also the, the program for digitizing all of our records, the, you know, from the time immemorial to through two, 2012. I, I think that's something that, that I understand the need for it. I'm not sure I understand how it's emergency relief. And, and so, again, that's, that's only about, including the, the fee, including the licensing fee, it's, I think about $111,000. So again, compared to 61 million, not so much. But, you know, that's, that's concern that, are, are we already working with this company? With, with the, is that, is that something, maybe Superintendent Simon, are we already working with the company that is for the digital, digital records?
So, so we have kind of kicked off the implementation process, and I think we're kind of pretty early on in terms of doing that. When we looked at it, I mean, in terms of continuity of operations, we have like a paper process now. And going digital, there's a couple of things that were concerned. One, it's laborious and difficult for the parent or student or whoever receives it. But then we were seeing a deterioration of our records to where they weren't, would no longer be even usable if we didn't do something. But that's in terms of maintaining operations. We felt like having a digital, a digital method of giving those transcripts would, would fit within the grant parameters. And of course, we'll, you know, once we submit this up, probably tomorrow, we'll start getting questions. And if that's something they question, we'll sort of let the board know.
I think it's, and, and, you know, I had talked to the superintendent on both of these issues before, not at any great length. And I, and I do appreciate the logic in that I, I just didn't know. I will, Mr. Rella, I will trust your judgment if, if, if you think that that is, would fit into the parameters of, of the grant. So that's, that's your opinion, and I, I would value that highly. Am I correct with that?
We feel good about it, obviously, that's why we put up the grant. I mean, again, a lot of this stuff, there's going to be back and forth when they actually get into the nuts and bolts of it. And we'll, you know, we'll see. I feel like the team, when we reviewed it, we felt pretty good that it fits within the grant. But of course, Department of Ed might have a differing opinion, so.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is request a workshop to, at some time in the not distant future to, to deal with the strategic planning and, and the use of an outside vendor. And I'm in no way have a prejudgment on that. What I've heard from the superintendents seems pretty reasonable. But I, I think it's something that all the board members should hear and that the public has a chance to chime in on. So I do appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Rella. And, and I was about to ask you to comment on the, on the Cognia, if, if you could.
Yeah, so I, I'm actually happy to comment on a few things. So you asked about our principal engagement and our ed leadership engagement. One of the things that we have going on are quite a few of these programs that we are implementing as far as high dose tutoring, our transformational leadership, our beyond the bell. These are actually in practice. And I do know that our curriculum team and our leadership team is actually having more of a qualitative approach to program evaluation. Is this effective? How are we seeing? I mean, really, a lot of it is, is the juice worth the squeeze? And we have, you know, anecdotal conversations at this moment, but we also have Mr. Gilfelin, who is also tracking our more quantitative approach to analyzing this. As far as the Cognia aspect, and I can talk to Mr. Rella because when I'm reading through, and I, you know, maybe we need to just see if I missed something. But in the write-up that goes to DOE, it does reference Cognia. And, and we do need to remove the actual name of the firm. We need to focus on the fact that it is strategic, strategic planning. We are interested in outside consulting. And one of the aspects is that when we're looking at a strategic planning situation, we think there's some value added to having a person who's not from this community, doesn't have skin in this game, is not influenced by their peers or relationships that they have perhaps previously with the district or currently with the district. So we do think that there is benefit of bringing them in. Cognia specifically is a firm that we are right now discussing. In fact, I have a meeting with them tomorrow on a proposal that has not been finalized. It is not 250,000. So in the budget narrative, that is, it doesn't specify. Cognia, it specifies the community engagement, strategic and planning, and the, the program evaluation that we think is going to be ongoing, that everything that we are bringing to you, and this is including even our approach to our HVAC work, we feel we need to constantly look at it. Are we getting the same expectation that we had prior to? Is it falling out to actually be a true thing? Is it working for us? Like an example, Beyond the Bell. One of the things that I would like us to examine is, can we bring in counselors and have counselors serve in a similar role? So also, it's one of those, we've put in a lot of work of creating these ideas. So is it something that we need to just discontinue? Or is this something that we need to reimagine and add to it? And I do think that there's something for us to explore to have almost like a crisis hotline with Beyond the Bell. So that's an example. With Cognia, it is this portion in the contract we will present to you all. We will have Cognia come. They are known across the nation. They support school districts on strategic plans. They focus, they work with us actually on our accreditation of our schools. So they have quite a bit of validity in the, the school performance world. And I think that they'll bring something to us that I think you'll find quite interesting. I think also with the community engagement, the strategic planning, we're going to find that opportunities are going to show themselves in that process, that we can also modify this grant to adapt to it, including ideas such as, you know, a continuation of expansion, more performing arts opportunities for our students. So those can come in. I do have one thing that I want Staff Member Prescott Coles to present as well. We have had that dashboard of ESAR funding, and it's built. And it is, again, this growing, what, digital organism that we keep finding more things to add to it because there's so much to talk about. So this is something that also people can look at and have talked about it before. But if you hover your cursor over, you'll get a narrative as well as you can see this in different ways because how we look at our data is also just as important as the data itself.
Well, and, and thank you, Dr. Simon. And, and, you know, my point, and in fact, what I know about Cognia, which isn't nearly what you know about it, it's very positive. So I, I say none of this to be negative. I, I say that, that it's important for transparency. It's important that all board members know the direction intended. So I, I think the, having Cognia come and present, and that would be nice if they did that before we've signed a deal with them. I think that's great, and maybe that could be actually part of a workshop. So, you know, I, so to me, it's, it's important that, that, that we are all participating. And, and again, I, in our very short conversations about these things, I'm not opposed to either one of those things. I think it's probably going to be a really good thing for the district. So I, but I, so I hope you know where I'm coming from.
Oh, no, I certainly do. And I, and just while Mr. Coles is pulling it up, one of the things we're also looking at our systems, and I think this is where scribbles comes in, is that we have hardworking staff, and many staff are doing additional responsibilities that are just way beyond the scope. And when we are such a paper-driven organization, that is another thing that just occupies time. So our goal is to streamline, become more nimble, focus on the achievement gap, and be able to provide innovative opportunities and respond to our environment.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Coles?
A last little piece of the puzzle that I wanted to add. Last year, I believe it was September, the board had a workshop about engaging the community on our SR2 funding and how we communicate that and how the board is allocating those funds. So if we could show it on the screen, we had an SR2 dashboard that we created at that time. With the addition of the SR3 funds, this is still in development because it's not approved yet, but what we'll have is an SR2 and 3 combined dashboard. Because Member Serton brought up the different funds and how they're working together, SR2 and SR3 are working at the same time together. So it's important to see how they are layered. So you can filter between ARP, which is the SR2 or SR3. You can look at SR2, and there's, those are the big buckets that Mr. Rella mentioned. And then you can also look at each individual project, and it has that dollar amount and that project description from the package and the board agenda, just as another way to kind of wrap our minds around this unprecedented funding. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If we have no further comments, I, I think it's probably a good time to have a vote on this. So no further comments, so. No, we, we've already had public input. Okay. So, and I'm, I'm, I wanted, before we vote, I did want to add that our, my thanks, and I'm sure I can say our thanks from everybody in the dais, to the curriculum team and the president, those that presenters, the finance team, and, and certainly the, our, our data team. And, and this really has been helpful. And I thank all of you. And questions are always, how can we do this right? How, how can we do the best we can? And, and I do appreciate everyone's efforts in this area. And so with, with that being said, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Okay. It's been so long. Okay, go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you, Chair Hyatt. Are you ready for the next action item?
We, we are, we are ready, yes.
All right, thank you, Chair Hyatt, members of the board. Action item number three is Amendments to Board Policy 5120.01, School Zone Boundary Descriptions, also known as the SPOT rezoning. This is the first reading on January 5th, 2021. On January 5th, 2022, the board held a workshop to discuss, consider, and receive input on amendments to the school zone boundaries for Idah Wild and Metcalf Elementary Schools due to the expected overcrowding at Idah Wild and the significant expected under enrollment at Metcalf during the 2022 to 2023 school year. Staff has made amendments to the school zones for Idah Wild and Metcalf Elementary Schools, which are set forth in the Statement of Purpose Effect, which were posted on the website and provided to the board. Just to note, this is a very long policy because it includes all of the schools. So the portion that we included is only the portion regarding Idah Wild and Metcalf as the other zones are, we are recommending that they remain as previously adopted.
Okay, do you have a motion?
And, oh, I'm sorry. At this time, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the proposed amendments to the Idah Wild and Metcalf Elementary School Zone Boundaries in Board Policy 5120.01, as presented for advertising and schedule a public hearing on February 15th at 6:30. Please.
Do you have a motion to that effect?
So will Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Certain, second by Ms. Russell, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
And Chair Hyatt, I'm not sure if there are any public comments.
Oh, I'm, that was not good. This is, okay. On Duval?
Correct.
We've already.
Right, but just citizen.
Okay, we'll do that. Let me check very carefully. And I, I don't, I didn't have any citizen input. Do we have anybody on the phone on the zoning, on the zoning? Okay, well, in that case, we're okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the first person that I have here is, oh, I think, I believe she is Adriana Kane? Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Tonight was a lot, a lot of information. I had a question about the information we just received about Duval. I had saw, I believe it's called the Gainesville for All, and you guys are planning on doing a community center somewhere on the Metcalf property. I didn't see that listed with the new Duval. Is, you know, these are questions, I know you guys can't answer it. Is that something, it was a community center that was gonna, array of social and medical services? Is that something that will now be merged into Duval? Is that a better location for it? I saw it was part of an empowerment plan. And now that there's this new Duval proposal on, I didn't know if that was something that would merge into it. I saw that it pretty much was about fine arts, which I know nothing about fine arts. But I did notice that this year, you superintendent had made Rawlings a whole magnet program for fine arts. Is that correct? That Rawlings is a, I don't know. You looked like you were gonna answer.
Ms. Kane, we, we don't answer questions.
No, no, I'm sorry. She just looked like she was gonna answer me. But I see since 2016, there's been less than 10 students in the magnet program at Rawlings. So how are we going to engage families and students at this possible Duval center if they're not right now currently involved in the magnet program? Just kind of questions. I know nothing about fine arts. And that was pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Jones, do you think you could contact Ms. Kane and, and help her with those answers? Ms. Kane, if you would give Ms. Jones your contact information? Now, let's see. Did we, Ms. McCann, did you want, did you, were you gonna speak again? I've got somebody else ready, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead with Mary Helen Wheeler.
Thank you, sir. It was an interesting evening, and I wanted to stay because that right brain that's the fine art person gets you into trouble. And recently, I spoke with some people who were trying to locate a school here for nursing through HCA to work with North Florida. And they were looking for a place to actually educate these young people coming in to be nursing students. I happened to think of Turwilleger, which was over there close to North Florida, you know, as a possible site for a school like this. And then I met with some other commissioners through the state who were talking about malls closing down and how they were reusing them. In Jacksonville, they've taken a mall and turned it into a senior living facility. And schools like Turwilleger are set up that you could actually repurpose them for Job Corps, say, you know, where people are actually living and working on a campus. We're looking for housing. We're so desperate for housing that we're trying to find creative ways to house people. So as you are looking for the future of Turwilleger, think too in terms of what actually it could be repurposed to. And if you feel like that that's something you might like to talk about, holler at me because I would really like to share some ideas with you that perhaps we could use for housing in the same way that they did the senior living center, where you, you've got a community room, you've got a kitchen, you've got maybe spaces where that can be used for congregate living and, as well as repurposing the classrooms for individual use in terms of efficiency apartments or things like that. I would, I just think as a community, we're going to have to think in ways that we can repurpose some of the buildings that we have, the building spaces that we have for housing, or to accommodate populations of folks that could work and live together that way. Another one would be foster care, you know, kids or young people who have aged out of foster care but still could use, you know, congregate living. So just think about it. You know, if Turwilleger ever comes up, you know, as a topic that you might like to think of a different way of using it, let's be creative and working together. My board, I'm speaking totally away from my board. I've not even talked to them about the possibility of something like this. But I just wanted to throw that your way and to see if something like that would appeal to you, if coming down the road, you would like to move that property along to a better or further, a use that would better the community. Just keep that in mind.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Wheeler. And Ms. McCann?
The last time that I spoke, and it was not recorded, at the end of my speech, I said, I came today to point out problems that many people within the school district have brought me. And I also said that people like myself who disagree are often labeled racist, a conservative, or of a political, political party. I think tonight's board meeting proved that. As a 26-year counselor, I, I'm angry. I have stood up and fought for so many children, black and white. I've called Department of Children families when kids were abused, when teachers said, I can't believe you did that, because of fear that the family would have retribution on me. I sat down and helped kids fill out financial aid forms. I worked with all children, black and white, rich and poor, middle class. The implication that don't, we want you to work with us because I care about the black students or kids who look like me in this community, that implication is that I don't care. And I need to point out that the reason why people don't get up here and disagree with people on the board is for that very reason. And that is wrong, and that needs to be brought out tonight, that there are many people who disagree. And it's not disagreeing about things that were in the budget that are helping children, but there are things in that $85 million budget that is not helping kids to learn to read. And those were the kind of questions that I had hoped that the citizens would have an opportunity to address, but apparently won't be able to. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Let's go ahead with our first caller, please.
You have three minutes with the board.
Good evening. I'm gonna address the first two things I was gonna call in, and then I'm gonna get to another thing. First of all, the superintendent has a different set of standards for teachers. I cannot imagine why we're losing teachers. I can't imagine why we do not have substitute teachers. What she's doing is legal, of course. She's providing incentives. If a teacher is vaccinated and they have to be out, she's got their time out covered. They don't have to use their sick pay, their sick time. If a teacher is unvaccinated and they have to be out due to COVID, she doesn't care. Use your sick time. Basically saying, we do not care about you, we do not value you. And you wonder why there's a morale problem within this district? Do you wonder why teachers are leaving and going to Gilchrist, Levy, Marion County? This superintendent is making it very clear she does not care. If you do not follow her agenda, she doesn't care. This is the most narcissistic, polarizing, egomaniac superintendent.
Caller, I do, we need, this is a warning about personal attacks. Please stick to issues and go ahead.
Caller, go ahead. You have three minutes with the board.
I, I didn't mean to cut that off.
Yes, I'm calling back in because I was cut off, and I don't know the reason why I was cut off, provided that there was two members who called the superintendent out and they were not cut off. So Attorney Delaney, can you please tell me the reason why I was cut off by the chair, which I would not rule compared to the two other members that actually called out the superintendent by name and were allowed to talk and were not cut off? I've been calling on the school board for years, and I was cut off tonight in front of my two daughters, who asked me why did the chair cut me out? I had to tell him, tell them I don't know why I was cut off. Again, provided two members called out the superintendent, basically told her that she was not qualified for the job, and they were allowed to continue to talk. Now, how did that fare? And I was extremely discouraged. And, but you're not gonna shut me up, I'm gonna continue to call in because you was wrong, and you was wrong, but how you talked to the other school board member last week, you owe me an apology and you owe her apology. Thanks.
You have three minutes with the board.
Hello, this is Dr. Sarah Rockwell. Good evening, Chairman Hyatt, Dr. Simon, members of the board. I will try to make this brief. First, I want to thank Dr. Simon and her team for their excellent presentations this evening. I'm looking forward to seeing some of these plans come to fruition. I think that they are amazing opportunities for our district and our students. But the main reason that I'm calling in this evening is that as I was listening to other commentary about the Duval plans, one of the commenters brought up questions about the funding sources. And these are internationally recognized and renowned charitable organizations that are providing their funding. And the questions brought up about the funding were nothing more than very thinly veiled anti-Semitic conspiracy theories. It was very upsetting to hear that at one of our school board meetings. And so I am calling in to express my hope that in the future, that sort of hateful rhetoric is not permitted at board meetings where our children may hear, may hear it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. And again, Dr. Simon and all of your team, thank you very much for your incredible hard work. Good night.
Okay, one more. Thank you.
One more?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. We'll keep going, but, okay. Okay, are we done then?
Yes, sir. I still have more.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. And so, citizen input is over. I want to make it very clear, as far as, I, I don't know what any future legislation will do to change this, but if, if someone is going to be critical, that's, that's fine. When, and you noticed that when Dr. Simon was being criticized, that I let that go. But I stopped when it started to be a personal attack. I'm not gonna stand for that for anybody on the dais or any employee, or period. And, and so, I, and I will say, I, that I, I didn't mean for the call to end on, on that one. What I meant, what I meant to do was caution, and, and that if it happened again, we'd cut it off.
Once it was a personal attack, I dropped the call.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, I'm, that's, but, yeah, let me make that call. So, but anyway, I just wanted to explain that we don't have to like what anybody says. You know, I've been personally attacked up here. Probably most everybody on this dais has been personally attacked. It's not special to me. We all get that. But as chair, I will do my best. And there is a rather pernicious piece of legislation in Tallahassee right now that, that we may have to deal with the results and change how we do things. But Ms. Attorney and I are in communication on that. And so I just wanted to explain the way I'm gonna do my best. Doesn't mean I'm right, but I'm gonna do my best to follow that protocol. Okay, at, at this point, board member superintendent requests. Okay, I, I, I see none, so I will make a very, I'm just gonna repeat my request that we have a, a workshop in the not distant future dealing with the, the moving ahead with strategic, on strategic plans. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.